Thanks, everybody. I'm not going to be here much longer, so I just wanted a chance to hit the gavel a couple of times. All right, we'll get back to work for the afternoon meeting. Let's start with a roll call, Tony.
Camenez?
Present.
Peralas?
Here.
Cohen?
Here.
Carrasco?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
Esparza?
Here.
Arenas?
Foley?
Here.
Mahan?
Here.
Jones?
Present.
Lucardo?
Present. All right, we're honored today to be joined for our invocation by Pastor Jason Reynolds of Emmanuel Baptist Church. And I think everybody on this council knows Pastor Reynolds is a senior pastor of Emmanuel Baptist, arriving in Emmanuel in 2012. He's helped to revitalize the ministry there and break in new members by redeveloping the worship service format and creating new ministry opportunities, engaging young families, renovating the worship center. And he has a very long list of accomplishments. I'm going to try to, forgive me, to get through these relatively quickly. He led innovative projects to fulfill spiritual and physical needs of the community, including Labor Day gas buy-down, the three-by-three Pentecost worship service at San Clemente County Convention Center Emmanuel Cares. Little-known fact, I didn't know, he has starred in multiple theatrical productions, such as Miracle on White Road, The Magnificent, and Defense of the Cross and the Incarnation. They'll be coming to a movie theater near you. He's received multiple awards and recognition for his leadership from a variety of organizations, including the California State Assembly, African-American Community Service Agency, and many others, of course, because we know he's been very deeply involved in the community, serving as a member of the Community Advisory Board, the chief of police here in San Jose. He's been a community trainer for the Police Department on procedural justice. He's a founding member of Claiming the Beloved Community, an interfaith group of clergy and laypeople, as part of a pact initiative, and works frequently with, I think, everybody on this, on the dais here, the chief of police, the IPA, the NWCPE, and community members of multiple faiths to collaboratively create solutions for San Jose. He's also, in his spare time, if he had any, adjunct professor at Evergreen Valley College in the Philosophy Department, teaching Introduction to Ethics. He's happily married to Boucher and is the proud father of Jaden and Jason Bubba. Yes. All right, welcome very much. Welcome to you, Pastor, and thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and to council members here, all of you, for this opportunity. It seems only fitting that we are in the season within my tradition where we celebrate the coming for Christmas. And so I thought it right to give us words of Martin Luther King as he did his last sermon for the Christmas season. It seems fitting. He said these words: "This Christmas season finds us weather-bewildered as a human race. We have neither peace within nor peace without. Everywhere, paralyzing fears herald people by day and haunt them by night. Our world is sick with war. Everywhere we turn, it is the ominous possibilities. And yet, my friends, the Christmas hope for peace and goodwill towards all men can no longer be dismissed as a kind of pious dream of some utopia. If we don't have goodwill towards all in this world, we will destroy ourselves by the misuse of our own instruments and of our own power. And it is my hope and my thought that we can take to heart those very words and make sure that we see the peace and goodwill towards all in this season and in San Jose." Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. We will move forward with a couple of ceremonial items. First, Councilmember Peralas will join us at the podium to recognize and commend Estella Inda.
All right, Estella, make your way over. It's my pleasure today to recognize and present her with this commendation to recognize her for all of her work within our lowrider community. Estella Inda was born and raised in East San Jose. Excuse me, sorry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. In San Jose, where she graduated from Willow Glen High School and then San Jose State University with a bachelor's in sociology and master's in library and information science. It's okay, East San Jose, we'll get a nod out here. Estella was one of San Jose State University's research services and social sciences librarians at the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Library. Prior to joining the San Jose State Library staff, Estella worked for the San Jose Public Library for 19 years at many of the different branches and departments within the library system, serving the many different communities in San Jose. Over the last several years, Estella has worked for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Library's California Room. This is the library's archives of state and local history. In December of 2018, Estella organized and curated the library's largest major exhibit, Story and King: San Jose's Lowrider Culture, that ran until March of 2019. First nod to the east side there, so for those that were interested. In July of 2022, Estella helped organize and curate the library's second-largest major exhibit, East Side Dreams: The Untold Story of East San Jose. The purpose of both exhibits was to put a spotlight on the different communities that have been historically overlooked and to bring awareness about the lowrider culture in our community. Estella is passionate about continuing her work through collaborations and continued exhibits that honor and celebrate San Jose's diverse community. It was a pleasure to participate in and visit both exhibits along with my family, who ourselves associate with San Jose's Chicano and lowrider community. And now I, along with our colleagues and our mayor, would like to present this commendation to Estella Inda for her many years of dedication and passion to making our city a better place. And I'd like to invite Estella to say a few words.
Honestly, this is an honor. It was an honor to work with the community. Without the community, the lowrider community, the lowrider council, I would not have been able to do the work that I do and I love doing. It's a passion, and it will continue on the best of my ability to keep doing what I do. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Peralas is here appropriately. Councilmember Peralas is going to present the last No Cruising Sign to History San Jose. And this has been signed by many of us.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, everybody. I'm not going to be here much longer, so I just wanted a chance to hit the gavel a couple of times. All right, we'll get back to work for the afternoon meeting. Let's start with a roll call, Tony.
Camenez.
Present.
Peralas.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Esparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Lucardo.
Present. All right, we're honored today to be joined for our invocation by Pastor Jason Reynolds of Emmanuel Baptist Church. And I think everybody on this council knows Pastor Reynolds is a senior pastor Emmanuel Baptist, arriving Emmanuel in 2012. He's helped to revitalize the ministry there and break in new members by redeveloping the worship service format and creating new ministry opportunities, engaging young families, renovating the worship center. And he has a very long list of accomplishments. I'm going to try to, forgive me, to get through these relatively quickly. He led innovative projects to fulfill spiritual and physical needs of the community, including Labor Day gas buy-down, the three-by-three Pentecost worship service at Santa Clara County Convention Center Emmanuel Cares. Little-known fact, I didn't know, he has starred in multiple theatrical productions, such as Miracle on White Road, The Magnificent, and Defense of the Cross and the Incarnation. That'll be coming to a movie theater near you. He's received multiple awards and recognition for his leadership from a variety of organizations, including the California State Assembly, African-American Community Service Agency, and many others, of course, because we know he's been very deeply involved in the community, serving as a member of the Community Advisory Board, the chief of police here in San Jose. He's been a community trainer for the Police Department on procedural justice. He's a founding member of Claiming the Beloved Community, an interfaith group of clergy and laypeople, excuse me, as part of a pact initiative, and works frequently with, I think, everybody on this, on the dais here, the chief of police, the IPA, the NWCPE, and community members of multiple faiths to collaboratively create solutions for San Jose. He's also, in his spare time, if he had any, adjunct professor at Evergreen Valley College in the Philosophy Department, teaching Introduction to Ethics. He's happily married to Boucher and is the proud father of Jayden and Jason Bubba.
Yes.
All right, welcome very much. Welcome to you, Pastor, and thank you for all your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and to council members here, all of you, for this opportunity. It seems only fitting that we are in the season within my tradition where we celebrate the coming for Christmas, and so I thought it right to give us words of Martin Luther King as he did his last sermon for the Christmas season. It seems fitting. He said these words: "This Christmas season finds us weather bewildered as a human race. We have neither peace within nor peace without. Everywhere, paralyzing fears herald people by day and haunt them by night. Our world is sick with war. Everywhere we turn, it is the ominous possibilities. And yet, my friends, the Christmas hope for peace and goodwill towards all men can no longer be dismissed as a kind of pious dream of some utopia. If we don't have goodwill towards all in this world, we will destroy ourselves by the misuse of our own instruments and of our own power. And it is my hope and my thought that we can take to heart those very words and make sure that we see the peace and goodwill towards all in this season and in San Jose." Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. All right. We will move forward with a couple of ceremonial items. First, Councilmember Peralas will join us at the podium to recognize and commend Estella Inda.
My pleasure today. We will recognize and present her with this commendation to recognize her for all of her work within our lowrider community. Estella Inda was born and raised in East San Jose, excuse me, sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, in San Jose, where she graduated from Willow Glen High School and then San Jose State University with a bachelor's in sociology and master's in library and information science. It's okay, East San Jose, we'll get a nod out here. Estella was one of San Jose State University's research services and social sciences librarians at the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Library. Prior to joining the San Jose State Library staff, Estella worked for the San Jose Public Library for 19 years at many of the different branches and departments within the library system, serving the many different communities in San Jose. Over the last several years, Estella has worked for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Library's California Room. This is the library's archives of state and local history. In December of 2018, Estella organized and curated the library's largest major exhibit, Story and King: San Jose's Lowrider Culture, that ran until March of 2019. First nod to the east side there, so for those that were interested. In July of 2022, Estella helped organize and curate the library's second-largest major exhibit, East Side Dreams: The Untold Story of East San Jose. The purpose of both exhibits was to put a spotlight on the different communities that have been historically overlooked and to bring awareness about the lowrider culture in our community. Estella is passionate about continuing her work through collaborations and continued exhibits that honor and celebrate San Jose's diverse community. It was a pleasure to participate in and visit both exhibits, along with my family, who ourselves associate with San Jose's Chicano and lowrider community. And now I, along with our colleagues and our mayor, would like to present this commendation to Estella Inda for her many years of dedication and passion to making our city a better place, and I'd like to invite Estella to say a few words.
Honestly, this is an honor. It was an honor to work with the community. Without the community, the lowrider community, the lowrider council, I would not have been able to do the work that I do and I love doing. It's a passion, and it will continue on the best of my ability to keep doing what I do. Thank you.
Councilmember Peralas is going to present the last No Cruising Sign to History San Jose, and this has been signed by many of us.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. And I would like to invite down, we have from History San Jose, Ken Middlebrook. Welcome. And then we have members of the United Lowrider Council of San Jose. I'd like to invite you to come down with us this time. And one of Estella's works was putting me in connection with the Lowrider Council for the very first time many years ago at one of those programs, and so I'd like to ask her to stay with us as she is. So earlier this year, on August 31st, my office hosted a celebration to mark the end of San Jose's cruising ban. We brought together hundreds of community members, advocates, lowriders, and the United Lowrider Council of San Jose to celebrate the city's unanimous vote to repeal the ordinance. Today, it is my pleasure to recognize and present the last No Cruising Sign that was ceremoniously taken down that day to History San Jose, where it will be archived with all of our city's most important historical artifacts. It was amazing to see the City Hall Plaza and Santa Clara Street filled with wonderfully-designed and customized lowriders and hundreds of people to celebrate the occasion. The removal of this sign here represents the future that now awaits our lowrider community. The removal of the sign is an honor of our lowrider culture and history that exists within our city and can now fully thrive. With us today, we have present members of the United Lowrider Council. We have President David Planko, Vice President Robert Diaz, Car Club Coordinator Eddie Lewis, Social Media Coordinator Stephen Martinez, and Education and Youth Coordinator Ricardo Cortez, I believe, was with us. And now I, along with my council colleagues and the mayor, would like to present the last No Cruising Sign to History San Jose to ensure that this moment will be preserved in our history forever. Here to accept it in place of the History San Jose President and CEO, Bill Stroh, who is out sick today, is Ken Middlebrook, the curator of collections for History San Jose. And I'd like to invite up David Planko, President of the United Lowrider Council, to say a few words.
We are honored to be here with Councilmember Peralas to present this No Cruising Sign to History San Jose and commemorate the historical lifting of the ban. We look forward to collaborating with History San Jose to tell the story of how San Jose became one of the pillars of the lowrider culture and preserving our history like the building of the Lowrider Magazine's first location. Thank you to Councilmember Peralas for leading this effort, and all of San Jose City Council members unanimously voting for the repeal. I would also like to thank the lowrider community of San Jose and throughout California. Keep it low and slow. Thank you.
All right, while I'm up here, I'm going to ask Councilmember Esparza to come down, And why don't we just jump right into the adjournment? Because we're going to adjourn and honor somebody we all know well. But I could invite Sherri to join us as well, and former Vice Mayor Rose Herrera. We're adjourning the meeting in memory of Commander Francis Fran McVeigh, and I think so many of us know Fran through his role as President of the United Veterans Council of Santa Clara County. He worked for the city for 31 years. I actually didn't know he was here that long. That's incredible. But he was a wonderful convener of people, and we need more of that in this world. He brought us together, of course, every year for the Veterans Parade and for so many other events, and we are so honored to have had him in our community for these many years. Councilmember Esparza?
Thank you, Mayor. We're adjourning today's city council meeting in memory of Commander Francis Bain McVeigh, who passed away at his home on November 22nd. Fran was a beloved pillar of the veterans community here in San Jose, and he served our city for three decades, most recently as Chief Deputy Director of Environmental Services. Fran was proud of his upbringing in Tucson, Arizona, and graduated from the University of Arizona. He then served as an aviator in the Navy, where he served in combat in Vietnam, receiving, amongst other medal decorations, the Air Medal for Vietnam Air Combat, the Navy Commendation for Vietnam Combat, the National Defense Medal, the Vietnam Gallantry Cross, and the Navy Marksman. Fran continued his military service in the Anti-Submarine Warfare Operations Center 1080, participating in numerous Cold War operations, and finally, served as executive officer of the Reserve Patrol Wing Pacific 1080, retiring with the rank of commander. He was no less accomplished in his civilian career, serving the city of San Jose for over 30 years in a wide variety of positions, including as a city planner, housing administrator, deputy director of general services, acting director of general services, and chief deputy director of environmental services. Fran was an absolutely integral and beloved member of our veterans community here in San Jose, serving as president of the United Veterans Council of Santa Clara County, chair of the Santa Clara County Veterans Commission, and CEO of the nonprofit Veterans Alliance of Santa Clara County. Folks may also recognize him, as part of his advocacy for others, he was very involved in the Measure A Housing Bond, and I think we have a picture with him as part of that grassroots campaign. Fran is survived by his, we have some cool photos of him. Oh, that's with the Scottish military, Fort Chaplains. Yeah, we have three photos. I don't know if they're cycling. There he is. That's part of the Measure A campaign, and Fran was out at every event, speaking up for how important it was to house everyone in our community. He is survived by his longtime partner, Sherri Oppenheim, who is here with us today, and his cousins David Rich, David Richard, and J.D. Hornbaker. Fran, he lived a life dedicated to service, to his country, to his city, and to his community. And we, as a grateful community, say thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Rose Herrera with us. She's the president of the United Veterans Council. And Adele Button Bell with the Blue Star Moms is here. And with that, I'd like to invite Sherri to say a few words.
Okay, I'm going to try to keep this short. So, Mr. Mayor and council members, it is an honor to be asked to speak in Fran McVeigh's memory. I also want to thank Adele and Rose for turning out today and support both Fran and myself. In all the years I knew Fran, he was much respected for his work in the city. Many times, he was innovative and forward-thinking, as when he succeeded in moving Victorian homes that moved in the way, that stood in the way of downtown redevelopment. He climbed the ranks from planner to upper management and was respected in all the positions he held and the people he worked with. He mentored all staff that he worked with and never stood in the way of their advancement. Fran held his city and Navy careers in high esteem and was respected by all his colleagues in both areas. After retirement, one of the last major efforts he was involved in, and one he was proudest of, was working with the city and county, planning and coordinating the opening, the access to Mount Umenum. Mount Umenum had been closed to the public for 25 years, I'm thinking, after it was sold by the Air Force. He worked with the native Amamutson's tribal leader Val Lopez and civil groups, as well as the San Mateo County Open Space District. The ultimate goal as a result of this collaboration is, one day, to open a hiking trail from the peak to Santa Cruz. Fran will be missed by all who knew him and worked with him. He's maintained friendships with city employees, and that was his character. Thank you again for allowing me to speak in Fran's honor.
session report. Nora?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you. Let's start with the land use consent items. There are five items on land use consent, 10.1A through E. We will first request if anyone would like to pull any of those items off of consent for discussion. I don't see anyone raising their electronic hands, so we'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Let's go to public comment.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Why doesn't the 10.1 apply to the 2040 General Plan? Says it's a commercial space requirement that no longer applies to affordable housing citywide and associated revisions. What I've seen with this 2040 plan that you guys like, just like throw around a lot, is like the Bible, like this is what we're going to do, is that you amend it when it's financially and economically feasible for a developer. But if it comes to building housing for people that are experiencing poverty and generational poverty, these aren't low-income people. These are human beings and citizens of my community that are experiencing and impacted by poverty. And you're not applying a standard when it comes to this 2040 General Plan. You just amend it whenever it's convenient for a developer. That's it. Basically, our city council is the lapdog for developers. That's what you are. You're lapdogs for developers. Anything they want done, you will come into this 2040 plan, and then you'll just amend it as such. But when it comes to the actual people, the actual people that you work for, you work for me. It's not the other way around. I don't sit down here and accept what it is that you say to me, and I don't care if you have 100 nonprofits. Each one of those nonprofits is receiving city money in order to support you. Pull funding from a nonprofit, and let's see if they support you. Pull funding from a nonprofit, and let's see if they're over there knocking on your door, supporting your policies. I doubt it very much. And this is a prime example of that. This is a prime example of this city not instantly...
Claire Beekman? Claire?
Hi, Claire Beekman here. Yeah, thanks for the words of Paul on this item. I'm not so sure how to talk about it, but I'm a little bit uncomfortable with it. There was, I think there was just a recent commercial space project that you had, that was approved in downtown San Jose, that it's done nothing towards good affordable housing ideas. Catherine Hedges was kind of appalled at your development planning for the project. So while we're very well-defining that we're not in a world of socialism and that capitalism and free-market practices is how to create the future of good socialist practices, that's our good American standard, and it sounds like you worked very hard to work on that for this item. To work so hard to prove such points, I hope you're not missing the important goal of how to house people who really need it, and that the future of downtown really can use really affordable housing. It shouldn't be just for the elites in the future. Good luck in that sort of thought process. I think we want to work in that way. It takes effort from all of us to want to develop that. Good luck how we can do that. Thank you.
Brian?
Hello, just a quick, you know, in World War II, during the Manhattan Project, they built Los Alamos, the cities, I think it was one of the cities in New Mexico in less than six months, and, you know, 200,000 people lived there. And if housing is an emergency, treat it like it's an emergency. If it's not, then treat it the other way. Thank you, ma'am.
Back to the council?
Okay, back to the council. Let's vote on item 10.1.
One second, Mayor.
Oh.
So we do need the council to open up the General Plan hearing, third cycle, the third cycle of the General Plan, a General Plan cycle, can't speak.
Okay, let's open a hearing.
The third cycle of the General Plan hearing, and then close it after this item.
Okay, that's what we're going to do. Thank you, Michael and Chris. Let's open the General Plan hearing for this cycle. We don't need a motion to do that, right? We're just opening it. We've just heard public comment. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to comment as part of this General Plan hearing?
That hasn't already commented.
That hasn't already commented. Thank you for that. Tony?
I have no additional hands up.
Okay, here we go. Let's close the public hearing. Now let's vote. Thank you very much, Michael.
And because you're all in person, I don't have to call rolls, so I enabled it on your screen.
Ah, that's efficiency in government, right there.
And I'm still waiting on one. Cohen?
Somebody's not pushing. I can't seem to, mine doesn't seem to do anything.
Yours is, you voted.
Yeah, I, oh, I'm here. Sorry.
Well, there it goes. Okay.
I believe Councilmember Cohen is the one that reminded me we could do this.
You can't win. All right. We're now onto reporter, our city manager, Jennifer McGuire.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm extremely honored to announce that the conference room inside of the city council chambers, where the city council closed session is traditionally held, will be named in honor of the late city attorney, John Richard Doyle, known most of us, to most of us as Rick. And the room is behind the chambers here. The closed-session conference room was selected as this is where Rick provided expert legal advice to city staff, mayors, and council members from the opening of San Jose City Hall until his retirement in 2020. During Rick's tenure, he advised three different mayors, 38 council members, and six city managers. Rick loved the law and took great pride in being a public servant. He was a skilled negotiator, dedicated professional, and a valued advisor and mentor to many city employees and elected officials. Rick served in the city attorney's office for 26 years. He started in 1989 as a senior deputy city attorney and was later promoted to chief deputy city attorney. After a five-year stint as city attorney for Concord, he returned to San Jose in 2000 and served as our city attorney for 20 years. From a personal standpoint, I spent countless hours with Rick. His advice guided me through many complex situations, and I'm proud to remember him both as a colleague and as a friend. I'd like to acknowledge Rick's niece, Megan Doyle, who is here today. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to acknowledge the rest of his family who weren't able to attend, but will be watching this live stream. In addition, I'm very pleased to see that we have a bunch of city attorney's office staff at the top of the chambers, so thank you also for being here and remembering Rick. Finally, I'd like to turn this over to our city attorney, Nora Freeman, to say a final few words.
Thank you, Jennifer, and thank you to my office for behaving themselves up there. As Jennifer had indicated, Rick had an extraordinarily long tenure as the city attorney here in San Jose. He... San Jose. He loved being the city attorney. He believed in public service and thought that municipal law issues were challenging and often new, certainly not routine. He worked hard to ensure that our office protected the interests of the city, and he drilled into all of us what a privilege it was to work for the city of San Jose in our office. Sorry. I thought I could get through this if I read it. I'm sorry. The California Brown Act, or the Public Meeting Law, only allows a limited use of closed sessions, and it's the opportunity for the city attorney to meet with his or her client, the city council, and to advise on litigation matters, labor negotiations, and real estate negotiations. Councilmember Peralas had suggested this naming some time ago, and it makes sense to have this room named for Rick. He spent many hours there on a weekly basis, providing wise counsel to our mayors, council, and staff. When Rick retired, our office took out an ad in the Mercury News congratulating him on his retirement and recognizing his 20 years of service as the city attorney. At that time, we wrote that his trusted counsel, his commitment to public service, his steadfast leadership, and his joy for the job had carried us through the years. He was a role model for the attorneys in our office, and we continue our representation of the city in keeping with his example. Ironically, today is Rick's birthday, December 13th, and so it seems especially fitting to recognize him in this way today. His wife Becky is going to be watching this. She is traveling today, and his sons, Grafton and Connor, are also out of, they live in other cities, but they are also watching today, and we want them to know that we remember Rick with just tremendous fondness and are so excited that this place where Rick ruled is now named for Rick. And Megan, I don't know if you want to say anything or not, but I think you may have wanted a chance. Thank you for representing the family today.
Is this mic appropriate?
Hi, I'm Megan Doyle. I'm Rick's niece, and I just wanted to extend our heartfelt appreciation on behalf of the Doyle family and my Aunt Becky Barnier, Rick's wife. I too told myself I wasn't going to cry. I left Kleenex in the car. But it's just lovely, and it's so wonderful this happened on his birthday. So just thank you for the honor. To echo what's been said, Rick loved the city. He loved working for all of you. He loved working with the city manager, and really, he really loved and was proud of his team. So proud. And as I followed him into public service, he always gave me great advice about dealing with electeds and other appointed staff, and also about how to hire and just build your team. And you were just the best team he could have hired. So we love this as well. Thank you, City Manager McGuire, that it's a conference room. It's like where you do the work. And that was Rick. It's like where you do the work. So Councilmember Peralas, thank you for initiating this as well. And Nora, thank you very much for everything that you've done to continue Rick's legacy and to just stay friends with our family. So I really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Thank you, city manager, and thank you very much, City Attorney Freeman.
Thank you, Megan. Megan, thank you for your presence, and please share a hug with Becky from me and from all of us. I want to also thank Councilmember Peralas for the very good suggestion. And note that, you know, I think most of us would think that there should be a memorial outside somewhere where everyone can see it, but I think Megan put it well. This is where the work gets done. And in that room, it's for many, many years that I had working closely with Rick, and I appreciated him so much. It was in that room that he shared his tremendous wisdom, I should say his tremendous patience, since you referred to it, Megan. He was such a good and kind person, and we all miss him dearly. Thank you. All right. Let's go on to 3.3, which is the city initiatives roadmap, first quarter status report. We have a presentation. Welcome, Dolan.
Well, the presentation is pulling up. Good afternoon, council, mayor, members of the public. My name is Eric Turella Jensen. I'm assistant to the city manager, here to present the first quarter city initiatives roadmap for 2022, 2023. I'm joined in the box by Dolan Beckel, city manager's chief of staff, and Lee Wilcox, assistant to the city manager. We are also joined in the audience by our roadmap executive sponsors, initiative leads, and initiative sponsors as well. So you'll see a little bit different of a format today in the spirit of brief presentations. In terms of the first quarter, the staff memo goes into significant detail for Q1 actual key results and their final statuses for July 1st through September 30th timeframe. Across the leadership capacity of the enterprise priorities, staff achieved 57 out of the 81 key results in total for Q1, moving council prioritize initiatives forward. The Q1 actual key results status of the roadmap is broken down here by enterprise priority. Overall, staff worked to move these complex citywide initiatives forward, resulting in 70% green, 20% yellow, and 10% red status, with the breakdowns visually represented here by each enterprise priority. Moving on to the second quarter, our current quarter, staff are working towards 91 total Q2 planned key results that are shared in full in the staff memo. On this slide, we highlight a few of the more critical steps that staff have taken in order to resolve challenges and close the gap between planned and actual key results, with a few initiative work streams here, including small business technical assistance, pretrial release, childcare citing, and the affordable housing on Assembly Use Sites policy, or YGB. Each of these Q2 key results progress with the resolutions highlighted here. And, I said it would be short, acknowledging that today's packed agenda, this concludes our presentation, and we are available for questions related to the full set of key results in the staff memo. Executive sponsors are in the audience. Initiative sponsors are in the audience as well for, if you have any questions.
Eric, that was a fabulous presentation. Thank you.
Yes, that was. Now we'll go to public comments.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from The Horseshoe. It was conspicuously obvious that there was nothing reported on ending homelessness. And, well, you know, of course, you guys mouth a lot of platitudes about how morally you feel it's objectionable to not deal with homelessness. I'm more concerned about the policies. I don't care about what your mouth says, because your mouth, you guys are liars. You lie to people. And this is an example of that. I don't care what your rhetoric says. Your policy decisions and your lack thereof, or any kind of results, is an indicator that you don't care. Now, I already know that. What pisses me off is that you don't have the character, this city doesn't have the character to look people in the eye and say, you know what, we don't care about homelessness. We want people to die on our streets of poverty, and poverty is a slow death. There is different forms of violence. If you think that violence is just going up to another human being and punching them in the face, that's not violence. You can, you can, you can subject someone to violence via poverty. You can subject someone to violence via not creating any kind of policy that is consistent with meeting the needs of the least one of these in this city. And you can commit one of the most heinous acts of violence, because poverty creation is a crime that leaves no fingerprint, but it has DNA. And once you examine it, which is policy, once you examine the DNA of the homelessness issues in our city, it'll lead directly to that empty space where it says, "end homeless."
Brian?
A little bit off topic. Thank you for doing that for Mr. Doyle. He was heart and soul. He helped me several times. Thank you, ma'am.
Blair?
Hi, thank you. I'll comment a bit on the words from Paul. Good luck on how, you know, to really address, how we can continue to address racial equity issues in our budgeting. It takes practice to learn how to do that. Good luck how it can be more open and easier to do that in our future. With that said, you know, these are Q1, Q2 reports. I hope the Q3 and Q4 reports into next year, and Q2, too, also, I hope they can all work towards the, we have a really promising future in 2024 and '25, and I hope it's these reports today and the Q3 and Q4 reports coming up, that I just hope we really apply ourselves and really offer our better human values and principles, and that could really establish what can be a real hopeful 2024 and '25. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Okay, I couldn't help but notice, but we got a lot of items on this agenda, and we're going to have to get this done by midnight, so I'm going to exercise chair prerogative to shorten public comment with apologies from two minutes to one minute. Is that any objection from the council? Okay. Councilmember Mayhahn?
Thanks, Mayor, and I'll be quick. I think I mentioned this maybe three months ago when we looked at these. Is it possible for us to, as a council, review these earlier? And I know, Dolan, you had talked about the intention of doing that, but I'm just, you know, I'm noticing that we are, we're looking at Q2 OKRs, and they're called planned OKRs, but we're basically at the end of Q2. So how do we position the council to ask questions and give feedback earlier in the cycle?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Mayhahn, Dolan Beckel, city manager, chief of staff. We're still behind, and I think what I'm looking to do is use the upcoming fiscal year priority setting to kind of do a reset, so we can actually get ahead and give council the opportunity to see the, and weigh in on the planned OKRs in the previous report. Unfortunately, we are auto multitasking on the customer service vision and standards work, and we were not able to recover that schedule variant. So I'm really, I'm looking at the next opportunity as after using priority setting as a way to hopefully focus and limit so that we can kind of do a reset on what we are reporting and then catch up.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, and look forward to working with you on that. And then just a more tactical question. I don't want to hold this up too much here, but under enterprise priority for safer San Jose, and then OKR1, steward trust to keep the community safe, there's a key result, the final one, that was delayed from last quarter on working with county stakeholders to improve the booking affidavit. Do we have, what is the measurable outcome and timeline for that key result, since it was read last quarter?
Right. So we actually had, it was read, and we pivoted to a different approach, and I want to see if assistant city manager Lee Wilcox wants to weigh in on that.
Can you repeat the question, Councilmember Mayhahn?
Yeah, just curious, because last quarter, the, working with the county on the improved booking affidavit was read. I see it's still listed there as a key result for this quarter. What is the, just curious what the goal is by the end of this quarter, and if it's, you anticipate it continuing on into Q3?
Yeah, I do. So thank you for the clarification. I do anticipate it going on into Q3. I know that we've had some joint meetings, and we actually have a follow-up meeting next week, county executive's office and city manager's office, to talk about some of the next steps, but I do think this will bleed over into Q3.
Okay, great. Okay, I will move acceptance of the report.
The motion's second. Any other comments? Let's vote. What appears is 10.1, but I think we're voting on 3.3.
Yes.
We all agree? Okay.
I'm still rusty on this, too.
Yeah.
Mayor, sorry to ruin the party, but I'm virtual for at least another hour.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Oh, I didn't know that. Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhahn?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralas, for snatching delay from the jaws of efficiency. Okay, we're on to item 3.4, which is the San Jose Clean Energy Revolving Credit Program. Welcome, everyone.
Good afternoon. I'm Lori Mitchell, the Director of Community Energy, and very pleased today to be joined by Julia Cooper, Zack Strike, who is our assistant director, and Teniu. This item is our San Jose Clean Energy Revolving Credit Agreement, and I'm going to introduce it and then pass it over to Julia. Just as background, why does San Jose Clean Energy need a new credit facility? Well, for a few reasons. It's really the next stage of our growth to support operations, so we need this collateral to execute more medium-term power purchase agreements, as well as mitigate risk factors resulting from some of the volatility that we're seeing in power markets. And as markets hopefully settle over the next few years, we may need to post additional collateral to our suppliers. And then finally, we have new state regulatory requirements that are likely to go into effect in the early part of 2023. So right now, we are required to post a financial security requirement with PG&E, because they are the provider of last resort, and that requirement allows them to access funds in the event that we return customers to them. And we do expect new regulations that will significantly increase this posting that may result in one to two months of our power supply cost. So just as background and a reminder, our current access to credit, we do have additional access to the commercial paper program. Council authorized 95 million there, and we have 60 million outstanding. And then we do have an existing revolving credit facility with Barclays, and that is for 65 million, and we have 10 million outstanding there. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Julia to walk you through the rest of this agreement.
Okay. Thank you, Lori. So we, whoops, go back one. It's very slow. So we initiated a procurement process in October of this year. We noticed 24 different financial institutions, and JP Morgan submitted the one and only proposal. We commenced due diligence conversations with them immediately, and we issued a notice of intended award on November 17th. We had a very aggressive negotiation schedule with JP Morgan right before Thanksgiving through, basically through last week. We apologize for the lateness of this memo, but we did want to get it to you before the holiday break. So we believe the agreement meets the terms and the issues that are important for clean energy in the city. So it's a revolving credit facility up to 250 million with a five-year term, and it has three sub-facilities, 50 million for a line of credit for general kind of corporate borrowing purposes, 100 million letter of credit with a term up to two years, and another 100 million letter credit available for a term up to five years. It's important to reiterate, as far as in bold and also that this is solely secured by the San Jose Clean Energy's net revenues, not the general fund. So JP Morgan can only look to Clean Energy for repayment. The current Barclays agreement will be terminated upon execution of the agreement with JP Morgan. So the fee structure that's in place, the maximum fees, we will not exceed $2.5 million a year, which is a 1% letter of credit fee on the outstanding LOCs. And then there's different- different undrawn fees amount depending on how much of a commitment we have outstanding. So the greater the amount that we have outstanding, the less the fee. And then based on the type of borrowing we have, there's different benchmarks or applicable rates that are used in order to calculate what is owed to JP Morgan. So the recommendation is to direct the city manager, finance director, assistant director to authorize, to execute the agreement with JP Morgan with these revolving loans and letters of credit up to 250 million, and making appropriate adjustments to the appropriation ordinance to pay for the fees to JP Morgan. So with that, we're available to answer any questions.
Thanks, Julia. All right, let's go to the public.
Brian?
Thank you. I like the Clean Energy. They're good. We, we've also achieved fusion, and that should be really exciting. It was Lawrence Livermore. It's in the paper. Still a ways off, but boy, if we're able to achieve this, none, all this other stuff will be sort of moot. Anyways, thank you, ma'am.
Paul?
Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. With your aspiration, with the city's aspirations to go to electricity, electrical energy, you're going to have to set in place a particular infrastructure. That infrastructure is going to primarily benefit, in the beginning, the affluent. It's not gonna be, just get this idea out of your head that BISAS are going to get into Teslas and, and get on buses with their tools. It's not gonna happen. Okay? The only ones that are going to be really accessing this resource is affluent. That's it. Because you have to create a whole, an entire infrastructure in order to accommodate these 400,000 people that you guys like planned with no city council meeting, these 400,000 people that are...
Blair?
All right, thanks for the words of Brian. A new fusion age is upon us. We can now openly talk about it. Thanks. Good luck how we can work on it. With this item, there have been considerable financial issues around EBC practices. Can that be described, if this will be talked about any further at this time? And how does that connect to our other financial issues with EBC? And good luck overall in just planning issues, like with the previous item. If you're clear with the public in planning, in your memos, in your financial reporting, you know, that, that can explain a lot of how to talk about planning openly. And that's an important concept that I hope we can do well in 2023. Thanks.
Back to council.
All right. I don't believe we have a motion, do we?
No.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Corales?
Aye.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhane?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, everyone. Okay, we're on to 3.5, which is the Appeals Hearing Board interview. We have one applicant, Karen Parsons, I believe. Is that right?
Yes, and she is available online. This would be a reappointment for her.
I'll move appointment of Karen Parsons to the
Second.
Reappointment. Okay. And is there any desire for any of my colleagues for interview? All right, we will vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhane?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
3.6 is approval.
Thank you.
That was Karen. She was just saying thank you.
Oh, okay, great. Thanks, Karen. Thanks for your service. All right, 3.6 is approval of the terms of an agreement with the San Jose Police Officers Association.
Yeah, I'd like to open that up with just a couple of comments. We are very pleased that the city and the San Jose Police Officers Association, otherwise known as the SJPOA, reached an overall tentative agreement on the successor memorandum of agreement for a term of July 1st, 2022, through June 30th, 2025. This agreement has been ratified by the SJPOA membership. I'd like to thank the SJPOA negotiating team for the time and effort that they put into those negotiations, including Sean Pritchard, the SJPOA President, Tom Sagow, the SJPOA consultant, and the entire SJPOA board. I'd also thank, like to thank the city's negotiating team, Jennifer Shembry, Elsa Cordova, and Bill Gold from our Office of Employee Relations, and Chief Mata and Assistant Chief Joseph from the San Jose Police Department. Both teams worked well together, and because of this, the agreement was able to be reached through the negotiation process. The agreement with the San Jose Police Officers Association includes items that are important to both parties and will be beneficial to our police department and our employees. Thank you again.
Thank you.
And Mayor, before you begin, sorry, I, I have to recuse myself from this item, so I will be dropping off the Zoom, and if Tony or somebody can send me a message when I can log back on.
Thank you for reminding me, Councilmember Prowl. Appreciate that. I, I just wanted to join Jennifer and thank the hardworking women and men of the San Jose Police Department. We know this has not been an easy time in any big city to be a police officer, and we continue to have the best officers in the country despite our very challenging staffing issues, and we know it's, it's hard in many cities, but we continue to have the most thinly-staffed big-city department in the country, and yet, by all, at least all standards of objective data, we continue to be a very safe city because of their great work. I also want to thank everybody on the negotiating teams on both sides. I think this is a very good result for our city. Okay, let's go to the public.
Before I call the public, we forgot to call the public for the previous item, 3.5.
Oh, we did.
So I want to announce it right now.
No, let's not. We'll come back to it. We're on this item now.
Right, that's what I was gonna say. We're gonna take public comment for item 3.6, and then we'll go back and take public comment for 3.5.
Yeah.
Paul Soto?
Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. The police department is absolutely necessary, because it is a police department that gives the protection of the constitution in the community. It also provides safety. It doesn't prevent crime. It reacts to it. So while the, while the agreement with the city was 160 pages long, and I didn't have a chance to read, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to read all of it, I trusted Chief Mata and, and, Deputy Chief Joseph ensured that there would be testing of the officers. I think that was one of the primary issues that has come up within the past year of just ensuring that the officers that are out there on the street, that they're clean and sober, and that their judgment is not impaired by either sexual perversions, or that it's not impaired by drugs or alcohol. That I trust that is in this, in this document, and that the San Jose Police Department continues to wear that.
Brian?
Just a quick, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Just a quick thanks to the police officers. Not easy being a policeman. I can't imagine. Anyways, thank you.
Back to the council.
All right, thank you. Any of my colleagues like to speak, or is there a motion?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, I think we can vote online since Councilmember Prowl is preempted from voting.
Yes. I'm waiting on three. I'm waiting on you, Mayor. And
Taking me anywhere. All right.
Arenas, Arenas is in the back, and she's voting yes.
Is she?
She just texted me.
Oh, she texted you? Okay. Trying to figure out, how did she magically do that? Okay.
Which we don't normally do, and I'm allowing because we're all weird, but next year, guys, you gotta keep the dials.
There's gonna be no weirdness next year. It's a new sheriff in town. Okay, let's have Councilmember Prowl return to the council, and let's go to public comment on the appointment of our appeals hearing board member.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. The, the appeals board takes care of homeless encampments. Okay, and, and we still have not, this city is violating the law because Boise versus Idaho very clearly, and this is a Supreme Court decision, Boise versus Martin. That's the case. Boise versus Martin states very clearly that if the city does not provide adequate services...
Paul, actually, this isn't the subject here. The appeals board doesn't actually address homeless encampments.
This is in the purview of her job.
Why don't we focus on the appeals hearing board interview?
Well, yes, that's what I'd like to do. I'd like to question her about that. That's what I'm talking about. So quit interrupting me again, Mayor. Let me finish my train of thought, or you, that's why you only give me a minute and interrupt me up. It's not gonna work, Mayor. In fact, it makes you look weak.
Brian?
Thank you. I think she would be a good appointment, and it's definitely not an easy job. Thank you.
Back to the council.
All right, we're, if anyone would like to reconsider their decision on item 3.5, the vote of the appointment in light of the public comment, please raise your hand or indicate. Okay, we'll move on to item 3.7, which is the waiver of the revolving door restrictions. There's no presentation here.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, let's go to public comment.
Christina Ramos?
Good afternoon, Mayor, and fellow city council members. It's been my pleasure to work for the city for seven years prior to my new position now with PG&E as Senior Government Affairs Representative. You've been without a PG&E rep for a year and a half, and I've been happy enough to take on that position and continue to serve the city of San Jose. And so if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you.
Is that the only member of the public?
Paul Soto?
Okay.
Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. So when we have rules, we're just gonna bend them at whim so that District 3 can continue.
Go ahead.
I am talking.
Sorry, go ahead.
We got 49 minutes, man. 49 seconds to talk. But I can't, when you interrupt, at the end, then you can make that judgment. Then you can make that judgment. But if you interrupt me at the beginning of what I'm talking and not allow me to make a summation, then what you're doing is you're violating the basic premise of public comment. So just keep your mouth shut and wait till I'm done.
Sorry, can't be disrespectful of the city staff. Sorry, just struck out, Paul. All right. I'm not sure if it's appropriate to say anything to Mr. Ramos, other than thank you for your service to the city, but if we could ask you to help hurry up the connections on some of the affordable housing projects that are waiting for PG&E connections, we'd be really, really grateful. I'll just say that. That won't affect the, my vote or bias in any way. All right, Councilmember Esparza?
Mayor, actually, I just had a point of order. Don't we have a conduct policy?
Yeah, we do, and that's why Tony cut him off.
Just, just once, or?
Yeah, I think it's just on, I think the city attorney's indicating it's just on this item.
Okay, thank you.
The First Amendment is alive and well in San Jose. Okay. All right. Any other comment, questions? We have a motion. Let's vote.
Yes.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mayhane?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Licardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we're on to item 4.1, which is a report on investigations of police misconduct in San Jose by Moyo, and I hope I haven't mispronounced, LaFakuri, LLP. There is a presentation. And note, there's a blue memo that's been passed around. This is actually filed by my office yesterday, but I just want to make sure people saw it, because I know we filed it pretty late yesterday. Welcome, Shabana.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'd like to introduce the, the firm that provided consulting services to the city manager and my office. In 2020, in 2022, we, in 2020, I'm sorry, we were directed to obtain independent expertise on the potential of moving police misconduct investigations out of Internal Affairs and into another entity, including my office. And I believe my memo attaches the scope of services, and we have a report today from MLF, and I'm gonna ask Andrew Law to introduce the members who worked on the report and present a high-level overview of that report. Andrew, are you on the line?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Thank that introduction, and thank you to everyone on the city council and to the mayor for having us at this, meeting this afternoon. Why don't I start by just introducing the members of the team that worked on this very important project for San Jose? My name is Andrew Law, a partner with the firm Moyo LaFakuri, and have a background in working with local government as both a prosecutor and as a civilian oversight investigator into allegations of law enforcement misconduct. I will turn it over to my colleague, Russell Bloom, do some stuff.
Thank you, Andrew, and thank you all for having me here today. As Andrew mentioned, I have experience working as an investigator, including currently have oversight of the Bay Area Rapid Transit Police Department, where I've been working for eight years, but I've also worked as a volunteer police review commissioner in the city of Berkeley, and have been recently providing guidance to jurisdictions nationally about the creation of oversight structures, both new and revised. And it's work that I'm very passionate about. I'm glad to be able to provide some assistance to the city of San Jose, and I'll pass it on to my colleague, Rania Adwan.
Thank you so much, and I echo the gratitude of my partners. Thank you so much for having us, and thank you for the opportunity to support this project. My name is Rania Adwan. I am a transformation strategist. That just means that I try and change things and make things better. For the last few years, I've been working in the oversight space, specifically helping out San Francisco Police Commission and the Oakland Police Commission, and then working with Russell and Andrew on a couple of other jurisdictions. I focus on community engagement and ensuring that oversight is rigorous, robust, and equitable. So it was a pleasure to weigh in on this project.
Thank you, Rania. And just to give everyone a very quick reminder of the project overview. So what my firm and with Russell and Rania's help did was we, we took a look at the current investigative process in San Jose and determined whether investigations of alleged misconduct within the San Jose Police Department should remain in IA, go to a different entity, or perhaps some type of hybrid approach. And to reach the recommendations that cover in just a moment, we looked at other processes across the country and other jurisdictions, took a look at a number of key documents relating to San Jose and the IPA, interviewed a number of stakeholders ranging from community members to police staff, current ASACs, and other San Jose officials, completed site visits of Internal Affairs and the IPA, and took all this information and applied our expertise in crafting recommendations that we will get into in just a moment. Before we step into some of the core recommendations in terms of the big picture, this is really a way, take it back, core recommendations really to advance civilian oversight in San Jose by supplementing the IPA and providing resources that it has not had in the past. The word, creating an investigative arm to conduct civilian-led investigations into alleged police misconduct. This would be a first in San Jose's history and will be a substantial move forward in terms of creating a structure that is, is really aligned with where a number of other jurisdictions are going, and thinking about new ways of examining police misconduct and helping to, to create greater trust within the communities that it flows. So I will turn over the specifics to my colleague, Russell Bloom. Russell, do you want to run with it?
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. And I think what is important when you're reviewing our recommendations, and what is central to the recommendations that we're making in relation to this new investigative arm, is the And I think what is important when you're reviewing our recommendations and what is central to the recommendations that we're making in relation to this new investigative arm is the specific recommendation about objectivity, objectivity of the investigation, independence of the investigative process, and direct unfettered access to the evidentiary materials. What we're talking about here is creating an investigative arm that can be perceived as generating purely objective evidence-based outcomes that can essentially pass the smell test regardless of who's reviewing the work. It needs to be perceived as unbiased and that the processes themselves are completely above reproach. In order to have an investigative outcome that really survives any challenges to the integrity of that investigative approach, it's important that the process includes direct and unfettered access to the important evidence and that determinations about relevance of evidence and whether every piece of relevant evidence was accessed and reviewed must be made by the independent objective investigative team rather than by the investigative agency. And so that's an important aspect of the recommendations that we're making, and I think that that's key and central to our report. Oh, just to add, Andrew, if you would, I think it's important to review our recommendations as iterative. That is to say, we don't know what we don't know about some new process. It's important to have an operation by which, when you encounter issues, concerns, problems, hurdles with a new process, that you're able to be nimble and course correct in the moment without really dismantling everything that you've already created. To be able to make small corrections and keep the process moving in a positive direction is an important part of the recommendation. So being able to revisit the structure and just make those corrections that are necessary to improve the performance of the system rather than dismantle and reconstruct, very important toward positive, forward-moving approach. Andrew, I'll push it back to you.
Thank you, Russell. And I've been informed that I'm chopping in and out a little bit. I hope it's not too much of an issue. To follow up on what Russell was saying.
We can hear you fine.
Okay, great, thank you. Is to create this independent investigative arm and have periodic oversight structural review. If we look at the other recommendations within the report, they relate to training investigators both within Internal Affairs and the IPA, and really trying to tackle the issue of turnover within Internal Affairs, trying to create more continuity and stability, particularly in this moment where there will be a change of how investigations will be conducted in San Jose. And also thinking about engaging in community outreach, something that our report emphasizes, and thinking about the procedures for how this will work between the two agencies as this process moves forward. So we believe that this is a significant change in terms of how investigations take in San Jose, believe that it is a step forward in terms of reimagining what policing and accountability looks like in this jurisdiction. And at this point, we're happy to open it up for questions.
Thank you, Siobhan. Okay, let's go to the public.
Sean Pritchard and Greg Adam.
Good afternoon. I'm Greg Adam. I'm the San Jose POA's council. Mr. Mayor, council members, happy holidays to you and your family, to those of you who are departing. Thank you for your service to the city. This, of course, is the time of year that at night we sit, adults and children, waiting on Santa Claus to come down the chimney. Well, last night, we got a surprise because it was a 60-page legal report that came down the chimney. In that legal report, the mayor is asking you, his colleagues, to basically adopt the entire report. Not sure if you got it any earlier than we did. We're still looking at it. But actually, I misspoke because he doesn't want you to adopt the entire report. There's two parts of the advice that his own counsel, his own legal counsel gives him that he wants you to ignore. In the letter I prepared and sent to you, which I'll leave a copy of here, we explain at length why his legal counsel agrees with us is correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Thanks.
Good afternoon, city council. My name is Sean Pritchard. I'm the president of the SJPOA, and I was surprised as you were by outgoing Mayor Licardo's last-minute attempt to mislead his colleagues with a memo that was filled with so many holes. Our letter from our legal counsel was emailed to you this morning and text to many of you. It refused the distorted, almost contortionist attempt Mayor Licardo travels to try and convince his council to ignore the city charter, cast aside Seal Beach, meet and confer obligations, and pretty much do whatever he wants. Clearly, Mayor Licardo forgot to heed the words of what fellow Harvard alum philosopher George Santayana, who said, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." You all remember Chuck Reed's disastrous Measure B, where he pushed an unlawful ballot measure by ginning up false data, failing to meet and confer with impacted city workers and follow the law. The outcome was a costly legal battle that drove our police department off the proverbial cliff, a department that, to this day, has not recovered. Mayor Licardo wants to do the same thing today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Soto.
Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I'm a Chicano that grew up with CAPS, which is Community Against Policing, because of the amount of killings and murders that were going on in police brutality that was going on within the Chicano community in Sausalones. And so I want to thank those that contributed to this report and also to the chief of police for being open and honest about whatever information he gave them that allowed them to arrive at this decision. And because what I see this is very consistent with what Chief Mata had stated when he took office. When he took this mantle, he stated that, you know what, that there is going to be some change, and this is a significant, significant paradigm shift. Now, I agree with Mr. Pritchard in stating that our mayor is shady and does some shady things. I agree with that because I've seen it myself. But what I am in agreement with and thankful for is that particular objectivity within this report.
Isa.
Hello, my name is Isa. Many of you know me as the president of Safer San Jose, but I'm not speaking on behalf of Safer San Jose, but as an individual resident of San Jose. I am sure you all are well aware of the struggle San Jose is having to hire new officers and keeping the ones we have. That is why I'm speaking today and asking you all to support the CMO memo that is well thought out and will be carefully implemented. Having six members of council that will be leaving in a couple of weeks is another reason to support the CMO memo. In all due respect to our mayor, his last-minute memo from yesterday is too complex to make a quick decision today. It gives no chance for the public comment to respond since most don't even know about the mayor's memo. It also does not allow the new council to give their input in the mayor's memo if it's approved today.
Brian.
Just, I know we only have a minute. We ought to stop thinking about each other as enemies. I'm not the enemy of the police. I have often felt the police feel that I'm their enemy and that they look at us as we're all criminals, and that's because they have to deal with, they don't know what's going to come up, what's going to pop around the corner every single day. You know, someone with a gun or a bazooka or whatever now in our lovely country with all that stuff. We are not your enemy. I'm not the police enemy. That's the human element that people keep forgetting about. And guess what? Human beings are messed up, and things aren't going to be perfect. But if we can get over that hurdle, things will get better. Thank you.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Siobhan, there are allegations that POA just received this consultant's report. Could you help us understand what, if any, engagement there was with the POA with this consultant's report, which I think the RFP went out two years ago, didn't it?
I'm not exactly sure when the RFP went out. We did send the RFP out a number of times. I think we recalled it once due to lack of interest, and we recalled it another time for some, you know, I don't really recall, but this was the third time. And, you know, and each time we put it out, we had, it was circulated, the draft language of the RFP was circulated with the city manager's office, city attorney's office, and the police department. Members of the police department served on the panelists to choose the ultimate consultants. The report was given, gosh, I think, late October. I don't know if Jennifer remembers, circulated again for additional comments, including legal issues, and then posted Friday, I think Friday the 6th.
The 6th of December?
Yes.
Okay.
Or was it earlier? It was posted within the 10 days before this meeting.
It complied with the 10 days posting.
Yes.
All right.
October 14th is when we obtained the draft.
Okay, so the draft was circulated on October 14th?
Well, just to high levels of the department.
Okay. Was the POA engaged with?
Not that I know of.
Okay. Was the POA previously engaged by the consultants or anybody in this process?
In my understanding, the POA was directed by the contract terms to reach out to the POA. I believe they attempted to comply with those terms, but the POA decided not to engage.
All right, so the consultants are on the line so they can tell us. Did somebody reach out to the POA?
Yes, we did reach out to the POA and asked for a representative to sit for an interview. After some email back and forth, and we made additional efforts, we did not receive an official response and did not get an interview within the time period within which we were conducting this project.
Okay. All right, so there were efforts made. And of course, obviously, this has been public some period of time, just as we all got it. I got it, I believe, at the same time. The public did. With regard to whatever's in my memo, let me just briefly say, this shouldn't be too unfamiliar to folks because the suggestion that we might consider moving some portion of investigations outside of the police department to the IPA was actually part of a memorandum that was approved in August of 2020. And actually, Jennifer, I know you had it on your work plan of some kind. Could you just tell us a little bit about the direction you believe was approved that staff is aware of?
Yes, and it's actually in the background of my memo in response to this report, but it was on July 30th, 2020, that Mayor Licardo and council members Jones, Diepp, and Carrasco submitted a memorandum to the Rules Committee and was related to the actions related to police reform, reimagining police, and strengthening the investigative authority to the Office of the Independent Police Auditor, and it was referred to the city council meeting and was approved by the city council on August 18th, 2020. And that memorandum that was approved directed the independent police auditor and the city manager to do the following: to provide the council with specific recommendations for how the IPA would take over investigations of police misconduct from SJPD's Internal Affairs that would incorporate, excuse me, the following elements. One, reallocating resources to introduce investigatory capacity within the IPA by the conclusion of negotiations, to enable the IPA to make factual findings based on its investigations of misconduct allegations, and three, enabling the IPA to continue to report concerns between her factual findings and the department's disciplinary decisions to the council and public. And that was the direction. We did have some subsequent direction per my work plan that I captured that went to the Rules Committee in November 18th, 2020. That was authored by the mayor and council member Carrasco that asked us to report back to the city council in public session by March 1st, 2021, with a proposed work plan, policy formulation, and possible budget impacts, and negotiation schedule for the expansion of the authority of the independent police auditor to include investigation of police misconduct. We did provide that interim report on March 16th, 2021, which called for us to get a consultant on board to help us review this process.
Okay. Thank you for that, Jennifer. I just wanted to make sure the record's clear that this, nobody's trying to play a fast one here. This has been on our agenda for two and a half years. And my concern is, for six of us who are leaving city service in a few days, this is the last opportunity we'll have to even weigh in on this issue, and there'll be exactly two council members who'll be able to say that they have any recollection of being at City Hall during any of the unrest and any of the discussion and dialogue we had with the community after the unrest, which was really at the heart of all this. And so I am concerned, obviously, none of us would have liked for it to have taken this long to get a consultant's report together. I understand there were challenges through the RFPs and so forth, but this is certainly not us playing it too fast. This has been two and a half years, and this is far from the final step. We've got a long way to go, as my memo suggests. I'm asking for city attorney to weigh in on some very important issues that are going to be reported to the next council, and next council is going to have an opportunity to look at those issues and make decisions. But the point is, first, and just to be clear about what I'm recommending, and recommendation number one, I'm suggesting we accept the report, but there are what I would regard as legal conclusions embedded in parts of this report, legal conclusions that we didn't necessarily ask for, and I'm not sure if the consultants are even experts in this area of law or not. I know they're experts in other areas. And most importantly, we should be getting our advice from our city attorney, and our city attorney has clearly weighed in on at least one of these issues very publicly on August 4th, 2020, when we were about to put Measure G on the ballot, when we had an opportunity to ask our attorneys what it would mean. And two members of our city attorney's office publicly told us, and that was Ed Moran and Mark Vanny, told us very clearly there was nothing in the charter, that if Measure G were to be approved by the voters, there's nothing in the charter that would prevent the council from moving forward with a move of investigations. Now, meet and confer, which is another legal obligation, may still be required, and by the way, I agree with the POA that meet and confer is probably required here. But that advice should be coming from our city attorney, not from a consultant's report, and I don't want us accepting a consultant's report with advice that varies in any way from what our city attorney tells us after our city attorney's had an opportunity to analyze our charter and the law, because the experts on our city charter is our city attorney, not some consultants. So I just want to be very clear, that's what the point of what paragraph one is all about. Secondly, of course, is asking the city attorney to look into that meet and confer obligation and what exactly it entails, and we understand and I appreciate there's likely a substantial amount of discussion that needs to happen. Some of that has happened. We have a side letter agreement with the POA, so that can continue and happen in a more substantive way, and we hope that will continue. I don't expect the POA to suddenly embrace these recommendations. I know nobody on this dais will be surprised to hear the POA is not enthusiastic about the idea of investigations of police misconduct happening outside of the police department, but it happens in lots of other cities, lots of other big cities. And Siobhan, I asked you for a list, and I got a list of cities that include New York City, Salt Lake City, San Diego, Miami, Cincinnati, Honolulu, Baltimore, Des Moines, Syracuse, no, not Syracuse, I'm sorry, Albuquerque, Long Beach, Seattle, and Portland. So we've got a lot of big cities out there that do this. This is not a novel radical notion. This is pretty standard police accountability, police transparency practice in lots of cities. And so I don't want any of my colleagues to think we're way out here on a limb on this because that's not what's going on, and Siobhan can probably speak to that more eloquently or more intelligently than I can. Then what follows there, in paragraphs three, obviously, is about moving forward with consult recommendations that are largely consistent with what the Rules Committee and council has previously authorized, but obviously with some greater specificity. And I guess the question really would be for Jennifer or for Siobhan, is there anything in that paragraph or anywhere in the directions that unduly limits your ability to consider a range of options?
Well, it's my understanding that next steps would be with certain directions.
Well, it's my understanding that next steps would be, with certain direction, to have a conversation with the city manager, with the Office of Employee Relations, and with other stakeholders to hopefully come to a consensus. I don't see anything in your memo that unduly constricts what my aspirations would be.
Okay. And Jennifer?
I agree, and I think that, you know, our recommendation was to do further analysis on these recommendations in the report and to continue, our intent was to continue to follow the direction to look at different models that may be fruitful for us to pursue, and we would work together on that and see if we could come to some consensus in the early months of next calendar year and then go bring our findings to the PISFIS committee meeting for their consideration.
Okay, thank you. And that's really what recommendation five is about, after discussion with the city manager's office about what's a realistic timeframe when we can get this back in front of a public council committee. So that's a summary of what the memo is. I know some might paint it as a last minute or extreme or too fast, but I think folks have been following the ball on this no differently. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, I was just curious if the city attorney can chime in on some of what's sort of been asserted, whether it be your memo or some of the conflicting sort of statements that have been made, as it relates to the authority of the IPA to actually go down this road and explore conducting the investigation.
Thank you, councilmember. The report, as I understand it, and the memos, as I understand them, contemplate additional work between the IPA and the city manager to sort out what this investigatory effort will look like going forward. And from my office's perspective, we would need to know what, exactly what that is. And then we would advise council on whether or not it's something that can just proceed, if it would have to be subject to meet and confer, and those types of issues and concerns.
So coming back to us with additional information on the issues of meet and confer, which seems logical to me, obviously, we're going to go explore exactly what falls under that umbrella. But I guess I was more curious about the ability now with the passage of Measure G that gives us the authority to really expand some of what Siobhan does. Is that, in your sense, is that allowed? Or, because I think the POA's council's letter is essentially stating that we don't have that authority, we need to go back out to the voters, it seems, and reading into it a little bit. But your interpretation of Measure G, it does allow us to expand that authority, you know, assuming we have to have negotiations related to the work that the POA allows?
Thank you. And again, it would depend on what that looks like and whether or not there are any limitations, prohibitions in the charter or elsewhere in the municipal code. And I have to say, it's subject to meet and confer. So there is a catch-all provision, if you will, in paragraph F, but it also has some limitations of the ballot measure that was passed in 2020. And it clearly states that meet and confer is anticipated.
So some of what the path we're going down, it's quite possible, it's legal per the charter, but it requires us to meet and confer and have those discussions, right? That seems what I'm understanding.
Correct.
Okay. And then if anything goes, anything we're interested in expanding goes against the charter, obviously, you will let us know if we go down that road, right? Okay. All right, okay. So I will move approval.
Thank you. Motion approved. Is there a second? A second? Any other comments? Okay, let's vote.
Was that just approval of staff recommendation?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Staff recommendation with the mayor's memo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second, yes. Okay, thank you.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Sorry, I do have my head up.
Oh, sorry. Peralas wanted to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see that. Councilmember Peralas?
Yeah, thank you. My concern was really on the striking of the language portion in your memo, mayor. So I wanted to hear from either the city attorney or Siobhan or city manager's office, somebody that wanted to comment on that. It just, it is rare where we will accept a report like this and then make a decision to sort of amend or strike through some language. I wanted to hear in regards to where city staff believes there may be some validation on the mayor's claims that that wording is false and should be stricken.
Could I clarify, councilmember? Because I'm not suggesting it's in every case false. I'm just suggesting that we shouldn't be committing to legal positions by accepting a report, but we should be hearing it from the city attorney. That's why I want the language struck.
Just wanted to make sure in regards to how that might amend the language. If, Siobhan, you wanted to respond, or I know you spoke a little bit too, but
Okay. Nora did?
As well as Nora, yeah.
On this record, thank you, councilmember Peralas, on this record and the mayor clarifying what he intends by those provisions, as I understand it, to the extent that the report sets forth legal conclusions that he and perhaps the council think should come from our office, that's what he's attempting to address, as I understand this language. And our office will be prepared, as this process moves forward, to, as I indicated to councilmember Jimenez, that we will be prepared to advise the council and staff on the limits, the parameters of what kinds of changes can be made, what will be required in terms of meeting and conferring and negotiating with the union and all of those kinds of things. But I understood, as the mayor has explained, that this one, A and B, is to not have in the report what he is suggesting are legal conclusions that should come from our office.
Okay, thank you. Is there a representative still from the firm that we contracted with that could come up to the
Yeah, they're online.
Or, okay, online.
Yeah.
It's a similar question for them, just in regards to their understanding of what it is that the mayor's asking, and if they kind of felt as though they were trying to insinuate any sort of legal advice or parameters. I guess I just didn't read it in that way. I almost felt as though we could do both things we're doing here, which is just accept their report, which is what they investigated and feel that they, you know, is the understanding of our system today. And if there are some legal nuances, I don't know if we can unpack all of those today. And I understand we're not trying to, and that we will have that conversation at a later date anyways. And so I guess, again, my concern is sort of going into this report and kind of striking language when, you know, this is a bit nuanced, as well as unprecedented, to kind of go in and do that. So I'm just curious from a representative from the firm there, if they could speak to what the mayor's recommendations are.
Thank you, councilmember. If I may, just briefly, certainly the intention of the report wasn't to preempt the responsibility or the ability of city staff to perform their role to advise, to determine whether meet and confer is appropriate, and to make the appropriate determinations about what the charter does and doesn't allow. Perhaps there may have been a misunderstanding about what our recommendations are or were, but our recommendations certainly are not intended to provide legal advice to you. We do leave that to appropriate city staff to make those determinations and to provide those legal opinions. And our language was intended to tell you that these recommendations are intended to be implemented to the extent that they are legally allowable. And again, upon advice of your legal staff and subject to meet and confer as appropriate. And I'll pass it on to Andrew to add anything additional.
Thank you, Russell. And I'd agree with everything Russell said. And on page 60 of the report, in the final paragraph, we note that the city should incorporate appropriate legal advice from the city attorney about the best way to address any legal issues to implementing these recommendations. We were asked as part of this RFP to identify potential barriers, and those were just things that came up as possibilities. So we tried to couch that in the permissive that that could be an issue, but perhaps that was misconstrued. Ultimately, we agree, this is the city attorney's role to provide the city of San Jose legal advice, certainly not a consulting group. We were just trying to identify potential barriers that could come up in the process.
Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, ultimately, I'm not comfortable with the striking of the language. I'm comfortable with the spirit of the mayor's memo, the remainder of those recommendations being part of the discussion that goes forward to the Public Safety Committee next year. Obviously, there's a lot of discussion and work still to be done, certainly on the legal understanding. I just, I don't believe we need to, and I'm not comfortable with going through and sort of striking that language. So I'd be comfortable to support it without that. Otherwise, I'll leave it alone, because I believe it was about to be a vote, and just happy to vote no.
No, we have other folks that like to comment. Councilmember Peralas, your points are well taken. Now that I've heard from the consultants, I just want the record to be clear where the legal advice is coming from. So as long as it's on the record that this is not our legal advice, because I don't want us accepting this report, and then months later, somebody saying, well, gee, you accepted a report that said X. So as long as it's clear it's on the record, I'm happy to ask for a friendly amendment if councilmember Jimenez is willing to strike recommendation one. Correct. Oh, accepted. Okay. And the secondary, councilmember Foley's behind this, so we'll check with her. But I'm perfectly fine with that, as long as the record is clear. Okay. Councilmember Cohen?
Actually, I'll take my hand down, because I was going to recommend that change, so I'm good.
Great. Councilmember Smartsa?
Thank you. Yeah, I was going to recommend the same change. I, you know, so we have the report and then the analysis that will be provided and have this item come before PISFIS for that work. I just, why can't the city council do that work at that time, which is what we expect to be done in committee? I mean, I think we're very close, but we're, the work is done in committee, and that's where the council members, of which we're going to have five additional council members, eventually seven, and, you know, why is that work not going to be done in PISFIS?
Councilmember Smartsa, you're asking
I'm looking at
Paragraph three?
Yep.
Yeah. We do want the committee to do that work, but they need information from staff to do it. And so what I'm asking is, hey, go explore all these areas, bring that back, but let's also have some guardrails on this. For example, A, right, you know, all discipline will remain within the authority of the chief and city manager's office, because we don't want a lot of misunderstanding to be out there about who's going to be doing what. And I think under state law, it's required anyway. So the idea is to at least guide the inquiry based on what we've learned over the last two and a half years, because we've been spending some time on this. I won't expect a brand-new council with six new members and, you know, frankly, only two that have really been through the time where we've been delving deeply on these questions, to be up to speed on all this. And so the idea is to give them a head start by asking the questions, some of the questions that need to be asked, certainly, and having information ready for them in April.
We're telling them what to conclude before they've seen that they've gone through that deliberative process.
They can always, on any given Tuesday, reverse any direction of ours on any item, but we are providing direction for the city manager and IPA, yes, because that's our job. And if we don't do it, and we just hand it off to a council that's really never seen these issues, I don't think we're going to see this move forward. It's just going to die.
Well, I think if it's right for us in 2022, it's right in April 2023, right? I don't think four months makes something any less right for the city.
Well, it actually does, because timing has a lot to do with it. If you've been in the middle of the issue, and you've been listening to the stakeholders, and you've been involved in many of the meetings, and you've heard some
I have been here.
Portion of the 531 recommendations.
I have been here.
Right, that's what I mean. But neither you nor I will be here in April. So this is our last chance.
Yeah, I just, I'm uncomfortable with this, having a late memo, to be frank, come to us on an item that is really important. And I am with you on the discussion. I think the discussion has been really helpful on the other items, but we, the city has done a lot of work. We've done a lot of work in the past two years, and we expect PISFIS, and the residents should expect the PISFIS committee to do its job, no matter who's in office.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. And thank you, councilmember, as far as for your comments. I agree with a lot of them. I'm wondering if the makers of the motion would accept a friendly amendment to refer the recommendations from the mayor's memo to PISFIS so that this can be discussed in a more, a broader fashion and with more analysis from both the CMO and the CAO.
Just want to understand, the current direction via your memo, mayor, is to send it off city attorney, city manager, do some work, and then bring it to PISFIS in April 2023. What you're suggesting, councilmember Davis, is to send it there immediately to have those discussions, as opposed to?
It's fine for the CMO and the CAO to do their analysis, but it needs to come back to PISFIS. The way some of these are worded is that it's directing the city manager to go forward with certain items and makes them a foregone conclusion. They need to come back to PISFIS, and they need to come back to this body, the reconstituted body, in 2023 for a final determination on whether or not that hybrid model should be the one that goes forward. So it's, there are some things in here that are not just to go back to PISFIS, and I'm saying they should come back to PISFIS with the CMO and CAO input.
Yeah, I guess what I'm envisioning, and I'm thinking about this, because I may, in fact, be on PISFIS next year, is, and so this point of departure, it seems, per the mayor's memo, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that we separate, go, you know, city manager, city attorney, go do the work, in April 2023, it goes to PISFIS, some of that work that we asked them to do. And then what I would envision is, at that point, we would repackage it and forward it all to the city council, right?
Right.
And so that isn't sufficient in your mind as it relates to some, I mean, that, it should be done. I'm trying to understand the distinction, I guess.
No, that's what you have laid out is what I am envisioning.
Yeah, so that's
Some of these items are not that. So it's saying to go start negotiating. Number two is saying to start negotiating with the POA before coming back to PISFIS is what's implied here.
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah. And the reason why it says that is, I think you're going to want to know how those negotiations are going when you're making your decisions in April and thereafter. The other issue is, frankly, some of this is going to require budgetary authority. So if you don't have any direction to see manager to do anything, it won't come up during the budget discussions.
Yeah, my only concern, councilmember Davis, is that we don't direct them to have those discussions already immediately. When it comes to PISFIS in April 2023, we're then going to delay it even more and kick it down further down the road to then go have those discussions. I think it can happen concurrently to a certain extent. And I don't know if that makes sense, but I understand what you're saying. I just don't, I don't know if it gets us to a very uniquely different result, if you will. Can I sit on it a little bit?
Sure.
As we continue discussing. I think councilmember Foley said she was okay with that additional, that amendment, and then
Thank you, councilmember. Okay. Councilmember Peralas?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, and I will admit, the memo was lengthy, and so indeed, I'm trying to interpret everything that's there. I interpreted it more the way that councilmember Jimenez described it. But based on what councilmember Davis just said, looking at it again, it does appear, for instance, in sequence, if recommendation two commences if recommendation two commences and, and then number three recommendation starts, it's essentially says upon resolution of any SJPPOA negotiation requirements, or resolution of that, the city manager and IP shall move forward generally with the MLF's recommendation to implement a hybrid model. So in that sense, I can see where Councilmember Davis is saying, hey, this really is the cart before the horse. If we're truly going to take these recommendations, understand what's possible or what the process might look like legally, come back to PIS-FIS and then decide, are we moving forward or not one way or the other and how? Then this, the motion currently doesn't accomplish that. The motion today is, is essentially saying, yeah, let's make that decision today. We are moving forward with the hybrid model. We're going to begin that work now. And then, you know, next, next year, we'll determine exactly, you know, how to move forward. So I, I do understand that. I do think it would take maybe a little bit more substantive conversation and debate today. It hasn't, this has not had substantial debate through PIS-FIS committee to date where we've been able to explore sort of, hey, is this hybrid model the route that we, you know, we are going to want to go? So I would agree with, with Councilmember Davis, maybe, and Councilman Jimenez. I think if you would be willing, that would be my interest too, was almost the way you described it where, you know, we're, we're not going to make any foregone conclusion that, hey, you know, we're, we're starting the negotiations now. We're going to somehow, you know, find conclusion and move into the hybrid model and giving that recommendation now. And so, and yeah, I, I, I am concerned if there's a, if there's a pathway that maybe is, is more reasonable, allows the work to be continued next year during PIS-FIS. I, I think that would be better and I could support that. Happy to hear, Mayor.
Could I propose some language that might address that concern, Councilmember? If we were to look at paragraph three and instead of saying shall move forward, it says instead, shall bring a proposed hybrid model recommendation to PIS-FIS with all this stuff that's delineated there. Does that address the concern you? And I guess I'd ask the same of Councilmember Davis. Start with you, Councilman Peralta.
I'm happy to chew on that for a moment and hear my colleagues' other thoughts.
Okay. All right, Councilmember Cohen?
Can I?
Or Councilmember Davis, did you want to respond first?
Can I ask a clarifying?
Yeah, sure.
Question about that?
Yeah.
Mayor, so in item three C, you are, it looks like you're granting subpoena power to the IPA. So if you're, with your bring a proposed hybrid model recommendation, edit, so that would apply to all of item three. So there would not be any additional powers granted today. Is that correct?
Well, I'm, I'm not recommending today we grant any, any additional powers.
Okay, because that wasn't clear in the memo.
Yeah, because, because it, paragraph three begins with upon resolution of negotiation requirements, right? So that's a long ways away because we know there's got to be some negotiation with POA. So, so anything that follows from there has to happen after that.
Okay. And in this case, with the, with your.
Oh, you're saying.
Proposed edit.
I get it.
The council would.
Would bring a proposed model that would incorporate expanding the vesticulatory authority in that way. Yes, we wouldn't magically just make it happen. Rather, that would be part of the model that's brought to PIS-FIS.
Okay. That, that is, I would prefer that.
Okay.
Over the current motion.
Okay.
I'm okay with that amendment.
You're okay with that, Councilmember Jimenez?
I'm okay with that.
Councilman Foley? Okay. And Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, I, I like the direction this is taking. It's better. I had been concerned about the overly prescriptive nature of this language in here as if to presume what the final outcome would be. You know, having language that basically says, do an exploratory, look at how this might be done and bring to PIS-FIS the legal and, and other issues makes more sense to me. And then all this stuff could be included in that. The other part is the, the question, there's this sequential part of this that says in number two, negotiate, and then number three, upon completion of negotiation. We all know negotiations could be one week or could be six months. And I, you know, if we want to have PIS-FIS having, beginning to have these discussions, I'm not sure we want to say that we'd have to somehow close negotiations. I think it's what the important point I think you were trying to make probably, but I don't want to.
No, you're right.
Point trying to make is begin exploring with POA their feelings about what could work for them or not. So that's also informing what PIS-FIS does more than it is have a negotiation and settle it. And so I, there's a lot of things about this that are a little bit so prescriptive and detailed that I, I'm a little uncomfortable.
Councilor Cohen, I appreciate your point, which is some of this does need to be done in parallel. Obviously, some of the negotiations may be ongoing while this is still being discussed at the committee. I would expect that and I, I think that's the spirit of the memo. So do you think there's some tweak we should apply? I'm certainly open to it.
I don't know if I want to testify certain language, specific language. Somehow, if it's understood, maybe just at the beginning with some overriding statement that says, all of this is about exploring what the legal, practical and other implications are and bringing a report to PIS-FIS in the spring on those that includes all the considerations here. That, to me, kind of helps a little bit.
Okay. I mean, I, I think after a conversation that I've had with city manager and IPA and city attorney, I, I, I think that's the sense. But, Siobhan?
Yeah, I just want to comment on Councilmember Cohen's concerns about overly prescriptive. I, I think that is a valid statement. But also, I'd like to, just from my experience, recommend some guardrails moving forward because it would be nice if we could explore the legal and practical ramifications of implementing a hybrid model. Because if we just leave the committee to look at what kind of oversight changes can be made, then, then we're back to the age of, you know, 2018, 2019, when we were doing steady sessions on oversight because there's so many different models. You know, we could stick with the internal affairs model. We could move to civilian review boards. And this, this won't move forward. So if possible, I would like to have some kind of suggestion that the hybrid model, its benefits, its detriments, the legal implications, the practicality of moving it forward be in that recommendation.
Siobhan, I, I guess I'm at a loss because I thought that's exactly what we contracted and waited two and a half years for.
Yeah.
So.
No, so I'm.
If you're saying we got to go back through that again, I don't think this is ever.
No, I don't want to go back through that thing. I, I think it would be nice to be not overly prescriptive, but to be prescriptive to the extent we are exploiting the hybrid model.
Oh, right.
And not all models.
I, I think that's clearly what's articulated in this memo.
Okay.
All right. So there's, there's no other model we're looking at as an alternative. Okay, Councilmember Esparza?
Thank you. So I think, I think this discussion has been really helpful. So I just wanted to clarify. So the language is to begin exploring number two and then begin, like have a general statement above number two and number three, number four and number five. Is that correct? Like if it were, and I'm looking at Councilmember Cohen. And then on number three, it would, it would be bring proposed recommendations to PIS-FIS. Is that correct? Is that, is that what I'm hearing? I just want to.
Well, I, I guess I'm just thinking that bring, bring a hybrid model discussion to PIS-FIS that takes into account or that it looks at the possibilities of all the items under here and look at the legal and practical ramifications of, of that and bring that forward to PIS-FIS. So some of that work is done in advance to make sure that PIS-FIS has all the information they need to do.
And then number three C would be review, right? Because we're not going to be directive, we're, we're.
Yeah, I mean, all the items.
Having staff work on things and bring it to PIS-FIS for that discussion to happen there, is that correct?
I mean, my opinion is.
I'm just trying to nail down what the motion.
Everything under three would be explored, but not decided yet.
Okay. I can, I can go with that language so that PIS-FIS can do what it needs to do while staff goes and investigates and does what they need to do. So it's exploring. Thank you.
Okay, are there, are there comments? All right, let's vote on Councilmember Jimenez's motion.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralta?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas? Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 5.1 is design bill contract for United International Airport.
I think we have a vote coming in from Arenas.
Sorry.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. The vote is in. All right, thanks, everybody. Item 5.1 was renumbered from 2.23. This is a rebid, this is not an item for presentation. Is there a motion? Let's have public comment on 5.1.
Sorry, I've, I have no hands up for this item.
There are no hands?
No hands.
Let's. Your motion, okay.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Jimenez, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralta?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco? Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley? Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
6.1 are actions related to long-term renewable energy and resource adequacy contracts. There's no presentation? Let's go to the public.
Paul Soto?
Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Once again, I hope that we can start having discussions about the wars that will be created in other countries to get the minerals for the batteries that are going to be necessary for this renewable energy kind of society that you want to create. It's irresponsible to talk about renewable energy and not talk about the minerals that are necessary to go into the batteries that are going to be necessary for both vehicles and for, for power storage. It, it's just irresponsible to do that because they are both connected. It's, it's not collateral damage that wars are going to be started and, and some of them are going to be here in this country, that there is going to be a lot of fighting amongst the people because wherever those resources are at, that's where the economies are going to be corrupted so that the government can come in and once again exploit the land and exploit.
Back to the council.
Okay, let's vote. I think we, we vote, there's a motion, right?
Not for 6.1.
Oh, we haven't, okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Let's vote now.
Jimenez? Peralta?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item 6.3 is the amendment to Master Consultant Agreement with STAN-TEC for wastewater, or wastewater facility capital improvement program. There's no presentation on this, is there, Nap?
No presentation, Mayor, but I'd like to just make a mention of something.
Oh, sure.
Late last week, we met with IFPTE, the union that represents engineers. Just had some initial concerns about the memo, but we spoke with them and they're comfortable and supportive of the direction we're going in. However, they just wanted to, they asked us to make some amendments to the memo, but we simply didn't have enough time to do that. So I just wanted to, in lieu of that, just tell you kind of what we talked about. In general, they wanted clarification that we would make it a priority to hire more senior engineers, which we have vacancies for. We've just been having challenges doing that with the intent of transitioning consultant services to the city staff, which we, what we have been doing. But this set of classifications we've been having problems with for the past few years, we're making some amendments to the classifications. So we're hoping that might be helpful in the next few years. So certainly, our intent is to do that. The other thing they wanted to do is commit that we aren't going to add any more senior engineer level consultant support. And that's certainly our commitment as well, too. We don't have the budget. We're not proposing the budget to do that anyway. And then lastly, they just want to have more conversations internally on an ongoing basis. And of course, we're happy to do that. So like I said, in lieu of having to, in supplemental, just verbally updating council on that.
Thanks, Nap. Okay. We'll go to the public.
I have no hands up.
Move approval.
Second.
Let's vote.
Jimenez?
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Esparza.
Yeah, so approval of the amendment with the comments that were just made to make it a priority to hire more senior engineers, not add any more senior level consultants and to have more conversations regarding this project. Does that include that?
Sure.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Let me, let me just, just a quick, quick clarifying question then. So this is a not to exceed number. So obviously, as more staff gets hired, we wouldn't be using the full consultant contract because we'd have more staff in-house. This is right now filling in for the fact that we don't have the staff we need to do all these roles, right?
Correct.
Correct. Thank you.
All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralta?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
I want to note that Jimenez voted yes on the last item as well on item 6.1.
Okay.
Jimenez was in the bathroom.
TMA, yeah. All right, 6.4. All right, speaking of which, award is, 6.4 is a award of dewatered biosolids transportation and beneficial use service agreements, wastewater facility. and beneficial use service agreements to wastewater facility. There is a presentation on this item.
Yes, we do. And again, I think I failed to introduce myself at the last item, so I apologize. Nap Fukuda, Assistant Director, Environmental Services Department. So for this item, I'm here today with Mariana Chavez-Vasquez, our Deputy Director over the RWF Capital Improvement Program. So we have a brief presentation here. We'll try and keep it brief for you. Let's see. Thank you. Thank you. So, a real quick background and cat... Get everyone back up to speed because we don't hear... We aren't here that often, or that regularly, I should say. You'll see here in the first couple of slides that we have been here on several occasions. So the item you have today is simply the next step in our biosolids management strategy out at the RWF or the Regional Wastewater Facility. You may recall in 2013, we had the Plant Master Plan approved, and part of that Plant Master Plan was to transition how we manage our biosolids, which is essentially the solids part of our wastewater stream. With the four main goals of reduce odors, have multiple and diversified disposition options, reduce the footprint of the area, because it's huge, and we'll show you in subsequent photos, and have flexibility to respond to regulatory and market changes. Subsequent to the Plant Master Plan, we did a biosolids transition study, or strategy, excuse me, in 2015, which again laid out how we were going to transition from the current operations to the new operations. Subsequent to that, we did a biosolids disposition market study to look at the rates and the capacity in the area. With all the wastewater facilities also transitioning to this new way of dealing with biosolids, we anticipated that the capacity would be limited out there and the rates would start escalating. So we did a market study back in 2019 to see what that was, and certainly it confirmed kind of those trends of what we suspected. After that, in 2021, we did a biosolids management strategy, which established a short-term and long-term way of how we're going to manage them, knowing that, you know, this is a long change for us to go from the current operations to the new operations. So in the short term, we had proposed and got approved to get hauling contracts, which is what the item is today, to get short-term hauling contracts while we could develop a public-private partnership perhaps on a onsite fertilizer facility, excuse me, or something like that, so we can manage it more locally. But in the short term, we needed to get some sort of hauling contract to match up with the completion of our dewatering facility, but also respond to pending regulations, which you see here, 2022 SB 1383, short-lived climate pollutant regulations, which will restrict what can go to landfills, organics, which includes biosolids, and move them away for beneficial reuse. And then lastly, you may recall earlier this year or late last year, we came here with the dewatering project, which is under construction now. Once again, here's how we operate today. The yellow part is the actual operational area of the wastewater facility, and all those biosolids go to the lagoons in blue and stays there for about three and a half years while it, for lack of a better term, ferments and composts. And then we move it over to the green areas where it dries for about six to 12 months. And subsequently, once a year, we move about 50,000 to 60,000 tons of, or cubic yards of that material to New B Island landfill. So this way of operating will go away in the next few years, once dewatering comes up. Because the new operation, we'll see, will shrink down from the 500 acres that you saw earlier to about a 10-acre site of DF, that red area. So all the biosolids will go there, dewatered, and because it's not fully dried at this point, there's still some nutrient value, some beneficial reuse value, and from that point, we'll haul it off, as I said, in the short term with these hauling contractors, with the long-term intent to have onsite management strategy. So Mariana will take it on from here.
Thank you, Mariana Chavez, Deputy Director for the Capital Program. So just a quick recall, our dewatering facility, we had the breaking of the ground earlier this year. We're in the process of construction. It's expected to be operational in 2025. So once that the facility is operational, what you're seeing here is a rendering. This is what we're expecting to look like. Trucks will be able to come through and basically just pick up our biosolids and take them to where we are going to have them for final use and disposition. For that purpose, we had a procurement process. We issued the RFP November 30, 2021, and for most of this year, we spent the time evaluating the proposals. We had actually people from some of the other agencies that are working in similar projects helping us, and we issued the final rankings June 2nd. The rankings are listed here. Denali, Sinagro, and Listec were the number one, two, and three firms that we started negotiations with. We have basically, since June 2022, we have confirmed the approach with each of these different companies. We have clarified all commercial terms, make sure that the availability and the capacity is there. As Nap mentioned, we are the largest producer in the Bay Area, so we need to have the space available for our biosolids. And the proposed management approach that we're bringing to you is basically the award of three different contracts. As we mentioned, we want to have diversification, and we're getting these through different contracts available. We are using three different methods: land application, which is basically taking the biosolids as they are produced from our site to different areas in Merced County, Sacramento County, and Solano County for direct land application. There is also composting. We are looking into two different potential locations, depending on the company we're working with. And then there is also a fertilizer facility that will transform our biosolids in liquid fertilizer. What we are proposing here in terms of allocation is to Denali, Sinagro, and Listec. We're proposing 35% to Denali, 57% to Sinagro, and 8% to Listec. This is a combination of the capacities that they have available, as well as their experiences and all the parameters that we use in the evaluation, and the proposed fees that they are giving us as well. So just a little bit on the companies that we are proposing to contract with. All of them are large companies in the business of biosolids management. Denali was founded in 1995. They do, and this is the deal with all the different companies, they will do from the receiving the hauling, the management, and the marketing of everything. So the city will only pay the hauling fee, and then the whole process will be managed by these companies. Denali works for the City of Houston, for Los Angeles, SAPUC, East Bay Mod. The compost that they produce is marketed as we care. And what you see here is just a little bit of the land applications and the composting facilities that they have. They are... All of them certified compost products. In the next one, Sinagro... Sinagro is the largest company managing biosolids in the country. They worked in the U.S. since 1986. They work both in the East Coast, West Coast. They manage some of the largest contracts in the country with New York CDEP, OCSD, East Bay Mod, and they market their product as All Grow. So again, they will be doing similar services, land application and composting. And lastly, Listec, they are different in the sense that they produce a liquid fertilizer. So they basically, through their process, convert biosolids into a fertilizer, recognized as a fertilizer, so that takes away some of the restrictions that you may have with biosolids. They just started operations in 2000 in Canada, and they are marketed as Listec Grow. So what you're seeing here is just some of the pictures of the actual product that is produced and the application in fields of that product. What we have here also is the rates that we are proposing that were negotiated. And again, it's important for us to have these rates and this capacity available now because the facility will be operational in 2025, but as Nap mentioned also, there is the need to have the rates set up, so we can have some security on this. What we show here is a significant difference from what we are paying right now to go to the landfill, but it's well within what other agencies pay. So we're showing just a comparison here between what will be the fees that are being proposed for San Jose versus what cities like San Francisco and East Bay Mod, Roseville, in this area pay for the service, and the liquid fertilizer as well. So as you can see, it's well within the ranges that they are paying. So what we're bringing to you today is just a recommendation for the award of these three contracts. The rates that I've mentioned before will take us into the allocation of money that we have here for the three different contracts. These contracts will go to the year 2029 with the option to extension if we have... We need more time to continue developing our long-term strategy, and the total of the contracts will be for $55 million. That's a not-to-exceed, and that is for the total time of the contract, and that's based on the future numbers of biosolids that we believe we are going to have available for treatment. And with that, I guess we can just get questions.
Thank you, Mariana. Let's go to the public.
Jim Dunbar?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is James Dunbar, General Manager for Listec International, here to speak on the reference project. And Listec is one of the service providers identified in the staff memorandum and recommended for a contract award today. Within the greater San Francisco Bay Area, biosolids and organic management is a challenge for many utilities, but also offers many opportunities. Increased environmental awareness and restrictive regulations, as mentioned, are allowing for advanced treatment processes and technologies, such as what we offer, to be competitive against traditional organic management solutions. Our facility in Solano County is the only large-scale and proven biosolids processing operations in the Bay Area. Our end product is a high-value fertilizer, which receives the highest quality standard from US EPA and is licensed by the California Department of Food and Air Culture as a bulk fertilizer. These classifications are unique in our area, and we're pleased to offer the opportunity to provide this solution to the city. We want to commend staff for its early efforts in addressing the need for biosolids management in advance of the actual start date. Thank you.
That's our final speaker.
Great, thank you. Councilor Cohen?
Just quickly, so this is a five-year contract that starts in 2024, is that right? Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's exciting to see this transition to the new, what I think will be more environmentally sound methods of dealing with biosolids and the waste, although I hope that in the future we will be able to find ways to mitigate all the trucking that is involved in this because there's a lot of... I mean, this is... Trucks constantly all day, every day. So I know that we don't have a choice. We're trucking now, we'll be trucking later, but...
And just to add these that I didn't mention in the presentation, the emissions from the trucking is one thing, but like the use of biosolids in composting and in soil, there has a big potential for carbon sequestration, so there is value in that as well.
Yeah, there's a huge value, obviously, compared to the current method. And the other question I just have is comparing cost from current method to this new method. We're spending about $11 million a year, I think, on these contracts. So what... So how does that compare to what we're spending now on our annual disposal?
It is significantly higher. So just to give you a sense, right now, we're spending around $30 per ton. This is going to go more like it's four to five times higher. But again, this is a change that we knew we had to do. It has been in the plans for almost 10 years, so it's not an unexpected amount that we are seeing, but yes, it's a significant increase.
Thank you. Well, I'll move approval.
Second.
Councilor Jimenez?
I was just going to say, thank you so much for making biosolids so interesting. We were just talking that your enthusiasm about everything you do out there is super...
I'm going to get a t-shirt, that's it.
Yeah, I think I'll be one of the people to take one of those. And thank you so much for giving, I assume, many of us a tour of the facilities. I think it's quite fascinating to actually see it in action, and so thank you for that.
And thank you for coming. I think that makes a difference, that you guys come and see what we do.
I think it helps us better understand what you're all talking about. A question I had is, is there currently with the lagoons and the drying beds, I mean, there's an odor that emanates from that, right? And so that's going to be eliminated when we get to this?
Yes, so that's one of the goals as well. That was one of the kind of parameters established by the master plan. So we have a phased approach, so this is... There are several projects that need to be completed for that to be done. We identify four major issues. One is was our existing headworks, our existing thickening facilities, primary clarifiers, and these lagoons. So we, with this project, will be completing three out of the four. Once that we get that fourth one, we will be able to get to the point that we have established our fence line. It's going to take still four years because we'll have to transition out of the lagoons.
So the Luans are going to stay there for a while?
Stay there for four years until we can transition them out, but after that, that will get us to the place that we need to be with the odor.
Thank you for that. I appreciate... I'm sure the people in District 4 and Mopitas and other places would appreciate that. The other question I had is, I forget what slide it was, and you don't need to go back to it, but can you remind me how much acreage the lagoons and drying beds currently take up?
750.
Acres?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's a big area. And so what I'm curious about, and I apologize if I didn't catch it or if you said it, but what are we going to do with that space after it's essentially... I mean, I imagine there may be restrictions. We can't go build ballfields on there or anything?
Yes, so Nap, I'll let you answer.
Well, it's identified in the Plant Master Plan for beneficial reuse later. It could be... It's a flexible space. I believe this was designated now. So there's been a lot of talks of a lot of different options. I mean, a ballpark is conceivable. It's also conceivable for wetland restoration or...
Okay. I appreciate that, and I... Just for everyone that's staying, I'd be happy to entertain the idea of inviting the Major League Baseball to come and revisit San Jose again, because I think it's a relocation.
I know Nancy is listening intently, but she has lots of other ideas about that land, which I'm sure she'll present another item to another council.
Well, we'll talk, Nancy.
Yes. Thank you so much for the report. Appreciate it.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yeah, I want to echo Councilor Jimenez. Thanks. Thank you, Mariana. Thank you, Nap. I was just telling Mayor like Mahan that I came in in 2007 as a council member, and we were just talking about at that time how they built all this stuff in the 1950s, and we should probably get around to replacing it. So I'm glad we're getting around to replacing it all, as well, we're changing it and upgrading it to meet today's environmental standards, and I really appreciate all the work that's happened. This is no small undertaking, you know, the $2 billion worth of work over many years, and I appreciate the great work of the whole team, because this is one of those many things that we do that's not seen, except when something goes wrong. It's like, you know, nobody knows the catcher's name until the ball hits the backstop. This is exactly what this is, so critically important. So thank you for what you do. Any other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion? No? Yes? All right, let's vote. Yes, it's Councilor Cohen's.
Aye.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, 6.5 is approval of the updated Direct Discharge Trash Control Plan. Welcome.
Councilwoman Mayor Carrie Romina with the Environmental Services Department. I'll kick us off while everyone gets in their chairs. My apologies for not being able to be in person today. This is a plan that is required as a part of our stormwater permit, and so what we're going to share with you today is some of our plans that are still in refinement, but we believe very close to completion. What the state has asked us to refine a little bit is more clarity on how we will measure and report some of the concepts that we're bringing forward, and departments across the city are working on that, being mindful that we want to commit to things that we can do, but also being aware that this is a requirement of the Clean Water Act and something that we are obligated to do. So with that, I'll turn it over to Regini, and we look forward to your feedback and questions.
Thank you, Carrie, and good afternoon, Mayor, members of council and public. My name is Regini Nair, Deputy Director of Environmental Services Department. I'm here with my colleagues Reagan Henninger and Andrea Flores Shelton to present to you specifically about the Direct Discharge Trash Control Program, which is one of several deliverables required under the city's municipal stormwater permit. Does this work this way? Too trigger-happy. Let's see. Reagan, can you help me go back one? Yeah, thanks. So before we go into more details on the Direct Discharge Program, I wanted to share some background. The waterways, I guess whenever we get to that particular slide, the waterways and the storm sewer system falls under the protection of the Federal Clean Water Act. The National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, MPDS for short, is the administrative mandate to protect our waterways free from pollutants such as trash, pesticides, chemicals like polychlorinated biophenols, PCBs for short. And the MPDS permits administered here in California are unique in comparison to the rest of the country. So referring to the diagram shown on the far right of this... Left of the slide is the US EPA authorizes the State Water Resources Control Board to administer these permits, which dates back to the 1968 Portico Lone Act. And keep in mind, this was well before the Clean Water Act became law in 1972. Overall, the Water Board consists of nine regional bodies throughout the state, and for our area, highlighted in the blue circle on the center of the slide, is called the Regional San Francisco... Region 2, San Francisco Bay Area Regional Water Quality Control Board, which includes Santa Clara County, Alameda, San Mateo, Contra Costa, and Solano Counties. This permit typically is a five-year permit term, except for the last one, which was extended two years. The latest stormwater permit has been reissued and is effective as of July 1, 2022. So in this slide, this stormwater permit essentially requires all 180 square miles of the City of San Jose to comply with, in effect, there are several city departments that are involved, as you can see on this slide, who are responsible to ensure that the stormwater permit is implemented and therefore resulting in protecting our waterways. But for this presentation, we're going to focus specifically on two provisions. So it's C10, which is the trash load reduction, and then also just some aspects, which is part of a new provision that was added in the stormwater permit called the Direct Discharge Associated with Unsheltered Homeless Populations. So next slide, please. Thanks. So for background, when the second permit was issued, the city's Direct Discharge Trash Control Program was the first of its kind to be implemented in the Bay Area, and it was approved by the Water Board officially in 2016. It essentially was the framework that prioritized and addressed trash that is directly discharged into two city creeks from the activities and from encampments associated with people experiencing homelessness, primarily residing in our waterways. And there are specific areas that were a focus. That was in Los Gatos Creek, Coyote Creek, and Guadalupe River. The new stormwater permit, which I mentioned is in effect as of July 1, requires that any agency that has an existing Direct Discharge Trash Control Program is required to submit an updated version by January 3, 2023. The importance of submitting this plan is that if the Water Board approves the Direct Discharge Program Plan, it will allow the city to claim 15% of its trash load reduction. And these credits are necessary so that the city can remain in compliance, both with the designated compliance requirements states that are specified in the permit, which is reducing 90% trash load reduction by June 2023 and 100% trash load reduction by June 2025. Without these credits, the city will be required to evaluate existing or create new programs in addressing trash. And as a reminder, the stormwater permit requires the city to effectively prohibit anything but rainwater from getting into our storm drains and waterways, including trash or debris that directly discharges into our creeks. So why does this all matter? Just based on data that has been collected over the years from 2017 to 2022, essentially on average, about 88% of the trash along San Jose's waterways is generated from activities and from encampments of people experiencing homelessness. In addition, since 2016, the cities, the city and its partners have pulled approximately over 3,200 tons of trash, which is about 6.5 million pounds. And just for a reference, this is, you know, just to get a little environmental, it's about 26 blue whales and about six Boeing 747. Maybe that's not green, but just a point of reference, that directly discharges within our creeks. And this speaks to the magnitude of the environmental and humanitarian crisis in our waterways. So the stormwater permit requires specific elements to be included in the updated Direct Discharge Trash Control Plan. And, and that's listed here on this slide. And the city is doing many of these requirements, and such as emergency housing, addressing trash and sanitary needs, and services for those experiencing homelessness, not only living in the waterways, but this is also requiring as to how we address recreational vehicles as well. But overall, the main point of the Direct Discharge Trash Control Plan is to ensure that the city improves water quality and protects both the storm water system and waterways as required under the permit and ultimately for the Federal Clean Water Act. So I'll pass this to Reagan.
Good afternoon, Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director of the Housing Department. So the revised Direct Discharge Plan incorporates a lot of work that the Housing Department is already doing across our entire affordable housing system and homeless response system countywide. We have to demonstrate necessary actions to provide services to the unhoused and also how we are housing them. So, and provide metrics for those programs. And a lot of this work is already existing or work that we've already undertaken. So for example, the Community Plan to End Homelessness, which is our strategic plan, tracks and reports metrics that are required here in this revised Direct Discharge Program. So for example, reporting on the numbers of individuals and households that are permanently housed, reporting on expanding emergency shelter and interim housing, and also reducing what we call the inflow, but that is the inflow of people experiencing homelessness for the first time. Those are key metrics that we report out on as part of our community plan and will now be reporting as part of this Direct Discharge Program. And other work that we'll report on includes results from our Point in Time Census, progress that the city is making on completing new affordable housing, and also the expansion of this, of our interim housing, our safe parking programs, and our SOAR Street Outreach Program. I think the, the big difference here is, in this revised Direct Discharge Plan is, it's a larger body of work, I think, that we're reporting out on. I'm going to pass it to Andrea Flores Shelton with the Parks Department.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Andrea Flores Shelton, Deputy Director of Community Services. You're all familiar with the type of encampment trash services that were stood up during COVID-19 and transitioned to PRNs over the last 18 months. These citywide services are outlined in the plan and are offered through our integrated operations, serving encampments and neighborhoods, trails, as well as direct discharge zones up and down Coyote Creek and in other waterways throughout the city. In addition to these services, and we came to council, I think, just two weeks ago, we will be bringing online in the next year the RV Bio-Waste Pollution Prevention Pilot that we believe will help to prevent stormwater pollution. One of the key ingredients to our encampment management work in the waterways is one of our key partners in the interagency team, Valley Water. As you know, we have an MOU with them, and we will be working to update that MOU because it expires in June of 2023. So that partnership is clearly critical to the work that we do in the Direct Discharge Zone. I just do really want to say that, back to what Reagan has said and the scale that Regini is talking about, the resources needed to be really intentional about this are great and vast. And what the Water Board and what the plan calls for to be very specific about the work in the waterways is a challenge for us. And so we need to be really intentional about a citywide approach for dealing with these and understanding where that work is going to reside in the city. So this plan is a, is a big challenge, and we believe that together we will figure out a plan that, that works for the Water Board.
Thanks, Andrea. So the Water Board recognizes the complexity of this issue and, you know, also wants to encourage both, not only internal departmental collaboration, but also external. And so that is something that is really necessary for us to include in this update. And so what, what, you know, we are currently working with several wonderful nonprofits, you know, Keep Coyote Creek Beautiful, South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition, Trash Punks, and also San Jose Conservation Corps, which, you know, has been funded either through EPA grants or also, you know, through council-approved funding opportunities. So, you know, with that also, you know, we have, you know, obviously, great support with Valley Water and then also with the County of Santa Clara Department of Supportive Housing. In addition, there are some other things that we can do as a city, you know, in implementing some structural barriers with essentially are these deterrents, which are just mechanisms that we could put along the waterways to prohibit any unwarranted vehicle access within, you know, these areas. And then lastly, as part of the ultimate deliverable to go to the Water Board, we do need to do monitoring and show our effectiveness as to how we're reporting and so ensuring that we're in compliance with the stormwater permit. And this has to be done on an annual basis as, throughout the permit term. So the next steps, we are asking council to approve the updated Direct Discharge Trash Control Plan and direct staff to submit the plan to the San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board by January 3, 2023, as required under the municipal regional stormwater permit. Furthermore, authorizing the city manager to modify the plan as necessary after the Water Board's review. And during this past month, we had the opportunity to share what we've submitted to council and the public. So they provided us some good feedback, so which has been good. So we're kind of ahead, ahead of the deliverable. And then if the Water Board deems acceptable and approved, the city will be eligible for the 15% credit until June 2025. And just again, as a reminder, once that credit expires, the, the permit does require the city to expand or implement new trash management programs to ensure that we're compliant under the stormwater permit. So with that, that concludes our presentation. So I'll pass it back to Carrie.
Thank you, team. Yeah, so we're, we're available for questions if any.
Great, thanks, Carrie, and thanks, everybody. Let's go to the public.
Paul Soto?
Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. Thank you for the particular sensitivity that you used in, in giving this report. You stated that trash created by people experiencing homelessness. I really appreciate the use of that type of language because the city Housing Department says homeless people, low-income people. This is how they reference it. Poverty and homelessness is something that the person, the human being, is experiencing. And there was a particular sensitivity to that in the, in your use of language. So thank you for that. Secondly, I'd like to start dealing more with the problem rather than the symptoms of the problem. These are all poverty-related. They're not homelessness-related, they're poverty-related. So why don't we start creating policies that stops producing poverty? And a suggestion, cap low-income housing, I mean, cap market rate housing at 50% of its.
Back to the council.
Any questions, comments from the council? Councilman Jimenez?
Yeah, just a question on slide, I don't see a number on the slide, but it's the one where it says why it matters? Where you list the removal goal and the actual tons removed? Yeah. I was just curious how you, how you, how it's determined what the removal goal is.
With regards to, say that with the, the materials that are removed?
Exactly. So the tonnage you described, the, the.
So that, that there is really simply that, you know, they evaluate based on the debris that's collected in the vehicles or it's weighed or, you know, just kind of rough estimations as to how that's calculated?
Oh, no, no. Well, I, yeah, I would assume that as it relates to the actual tons removed. Say, for example, fiscal year 2122, the goal, the removal goal, and it changes, and that's why I'm asking, was it 186 tons as opposed to 1617, which is 67 tons? Is it?
So each year, that's the way the permit has dictated what are the minimums, but you can see we far exceed those minimums.
What's the reason, do you know why they changed the goal?
That I don't have the history.
It seems like it remained consistent from, for a few years.
That I don't have the history as to why they removed it.
So you hear us speak, NAP Fucut, Assistant Director, USD. So you hear us speak about 100% goals, 50%, 75%. So there's an actual modeled map that was determined back in original permit, the first permit, MRP 2.0, the one prior to this, where it shows trash loading in certain areas. So there's an estimated loading based on some collection out in the system, says you have red, yellow, and green, and the red has a certain loading, so amount of trash per acre. So simply put, you have, you do the math of the trash per acre times the acres gets you so much volume, right, gets you a load. Then you, then you do the math of what's the 50%, 75% of that total load. So that's, the math comes out to certain numbers, and depending on the year, the numbers get higher and higher over, over the period of time.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the, the actual tonnage removed, that's all like Keep Coyote Creek Beautiful? Those are volunteer efforts in the community of folks picking up that trash, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, and then so the differing numbers, say from 2016 to 2017, 581 tons. And then, you know, this last year, 432 tons. The difference in those numbers are just simply that more folks were out there picking it up? Or does that suggest that there was less garbage out there?
It also correlates to the water levels in those times. So we don't have that information in this, but, you know, what's accessible and what can be removed safely without, you know, being in the water exactly. So that's part of the reason why you might see some discrepancies in the numbers.
And council, councilmember, I'd also add, and I know Reagan and Andrea would have some, some perspective on this as well, that, you know, as our unhoused population has changed, there's just more material. And, and we've also, as an organization, stepped up our efforts. So Reagan, Andrea, any insight into that?
Yeah, and I, thank you, Carrie. I just wanted to clarify that tons removed, it's, our volunteers are awesome, but the city also is doing quite a bit of work out there as well. And that work is a part of, some, those tons removed is a part of the Valley Water-San Jose joint work. It includes the vehicles that we've removed. It includes a significant amount of, kind of a complex array of different things that we measure.
Okay, so, so for example, fiscal year 2122, the goal was 186 tons, actual tons removed, 432. I assume that there's much more than 432 out there, right? There's probably, I mean, do we have any estimation as to how much is really out there and what we're not getting, right?
No.
Or a sense? I mean, but is that a common sort of understanding, though, that there's much more than that out there, obviously?
Unfortunately, yes.
Yeah, right, okay.
And this permit does allow us to expand that, so to understand the full breadth of that. So that's part of what this reporting requirement will cover as to the extent of it.
And I would add what NAP alluded to. The state official goal for us is, is zero visible trash. So, so we have, we have a lot of opportunity before us. And as Andrea indicated, you know, we've made great progress. It's, it's a big challenge, but it's, it's not for lack of trying.
Okay, yeah.
Just one other thing to add, Reagan Henninger with the Housing Department. In, in that time, since, you know, 2017, our homeless population has grown. We have more people experiencing homelessness than, than we have homes for. And I repeat this all the time, but for, you know, every one person we find housing for, there's two to three more who enter our homeless system for the first time seeking assistance. So it is very much an uphill battle, but it's also a dynamic situation. As we clean up trash, you know, more trash still is out there, new trash.
And, and just this, this, staying on this slide, the trash removed, that's in the creeks and waterways, right? Or is this, this isn't, trying to remember everything that's happened?
This data is strictly within the waterways.
Okay, all right. And do we, this is sort of tangentially related question, but do we know how many unhoused folks are in our waterways? Do we have a sense? I don't remember, I don't remember if the pit count actually says, okay, this is how many folks are in the waterways, these are how many folks, if it sort of disaggregates some of the numbers.
I would say we don't have, we don't have necessarily reliable data along our creeks. I mean, we have over 140 miles of waterways in our city. And to do sort of an exhaustive count of that large of an area, we, we just haven't done that.
Okay, all right, thank you. And I'll move.
Councilmember, Councilmember Jimenez, Omar Passon's Deputy City Manager. One of the things that came out of the Smart Cities Committee, several of your colleagues, moving us towards a mechanism for being able to comply with that requirement, to understand how many people are living along our waterways and where. It's, so that, that is in process right now, but we're just not there yet.
Okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate it. And I'm, I'll move approval, I'm not sure if.
I'll second it.
All right, Councilmember Foley?
Thank you for the presentation and, but, but I have some questions for you. So we're adopting a Direct Discharge Program in our waterways. But we don't have direct control over all that happens in our waterways. We have Valley Water, and then we have county. So how are we partnering with them? How is it going working with these agencies? And I'll, I'll share with you why I'm concerned because along the Guadalupe in my district, there's a lot of issues with cars driving down into the encampments. And we've approached Valley Water, and we've approached the county, and the county is hesitant to, to do anything to help mitigate and remove trash or anything. I know we're doing some of that, but how is it going with the county and Valley Water?
Regini, if you could talk a little bit about the differing requirements for each of the agencies in terms of how the state regulates us? Because that is part of the complexity, is different agencies have different responsibilities. And, and then if somebody wants to volunteer who has more sort of firsthand knowledge of how those relationships are going, so I don't know, Andrea, if that's you or Omar, if, if that's you on how it's going with, with the other agencies?
Sure, I'll, I'll go with the regulatory component. So what's interesting about this stormwater permit, it's really agencies that manage a storm sewer system. So Valley Water doesn't technically have a storm sewer system, it's their waterways. So they don't really have the same restrictions as we do with regards to addressing. So, so that's part of it. The county is similar to us, under obligation to comply. They have similar requirements. But their, their, their land ownership is not as vast in comparison to what the City of San Jose has within our waterways. And so, so that's part of the regulatory component. But with regards to collaboration with the other agencies, I'll defer to Andrea.
Sure, thank you. Councilmember Foley, as, with respect to the county, as you know, we entered into an encampment cleanup agreement with them. I believe we're past the six-month mark now. And that's been primarily focused near county expressways and other places. But we have a very regular conversation with the county department head that also wasn't, it didn't include abatement at the beginning, and we're starting to have more conversations with them because of a lack of compliance issues and wanting to really have public health issues addressed. So, so it's an ongoing conversation, and it is quite productive. As it relates to the area you're talking about, I would say we have, when it comes to multi-partner conversations, it's always complex, right? There's always competing priorities, and we're just trying to line up the resources usually so that we're all kind of hitting the cylinders at the same time. The Valley Water discussions, again, at, from a beautify SJ and Valley Water operation and maintenance level, I think they're very productive. Again, for the last year, we've had quarterly projects that we work on. We complete them, and I want to take a nod to, to. and I, I want to take a nod to Kip Harkness, who's been coordinating us at a broader level on just, again, the different complexities. And then we also will be coming to you later with Omar Passon's on the Coyote Creek Flood Control Project. So it's, I'd say there's a lot of open dialogue, and yet, the challenges that Reagan has discussed are immense, and we are working through them, I think, pretty productively.
Thank you, Andrea. Can I follow up on our agreement with the county? I understand that there's a provision in the agreement that to do any abatement or even limitation to an encamped person to a 12 by 12, like we require, that it requires the county executive Jeff Smith to sign off on it, and that he has been hesitant to do so or unwilling to do so. Do you have any examples of where he actually has signed off, and how often that has occurred?
I believe we've turned the corner on that, and there's one particular area in District Five that I think we're getting some traction on. So, again, I think there are, there's movement. And again, it goes back to, sort of, to that intensity, the public health issues, the public safety issues. And, again, we would like to move it from like a project-by-project approval, but I think we're working through that, yeah.
So is that, are you saying that getting his yes is easier, or happening, or?
We've, we've gotten a yes. Yeah, I think, I think it's productive, again. I think we're, we're working, again, this is a brand-new agreement, and I think, you know, again, we've been in encampment management 18 months, we're working through this with our partners, and it's become a real priority for folks, not just cleanup, but that compliance, and if there isn't compliance, you know, how do we work with our housing partners to, it's been hard to prioritize the housing piece of it.
Right.
But we know abatement is a tool, not one that we lean into, not one, yeah.
Right, I understand. And, and I'm not leaning into that either, but if we could control the site to a 12 by 12, that would be much more manageable. Can I ask you a question about penalties? Is there a penalty for noncompliance?
There, there is, and there's very significant penalties under the Clean Water Act. Nora, I don't know if you have the exact numbers in front of you?
I do not, but I believe it's something in the, as an order of magnitude, $25,000 a day, higher, up to $50,000 a day. Your staff is indicating it. I knew it was a lot.
And that's per violation?
Per day.
So that's not just one, yeah, per violation per day.
Okay, thank you. And finally, I would just like to thank the partnerships that we have with our nonprofits. We would not have, without their work, we would have a much bigger difficulty cleaning up our creeks. So I'll just call them out again, which you so graciously did, Keep Coyote Creek Beautiful, South Bay Clean Creeks Coalition, The Trash Punks, and San Jose Conservation Corps. They are really invaluable in this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree. Okay, any other questions? Councilmember Jimenez has his line on, but I, I think that was from before, so I'm going to assume he answered, he asked his already. I, I just had one, I'm curious. And first, a big thank you to everybody, this is super hard, and very important. I'm looking at the chart on page four, that describes the actual tons that we've removed, is talking about, is it blue whales? Is that what we're comparing this to?
It was just something, just as a relation, just order of magnitude.
Yeah.
Because it's always hard to understand.
We got a lot of fish there, so we got whales now, too. So clearly, we're far exceeding removal goals by necessity. Is there a reason why 17, 18 is such an outlier, why the number is so incredibly high, and then dropped in terms of the actual tons removed?
I mean, I, I will say, it just depends on access, you know, and water levels in the waterway, so if we were able to retrieve more trash in those times.
I believe that was some of the after effects of the flood as well, and the debris removal related to the 2017 flood, and the hundreds of people that we had activated along the creek at that time.
Yeah, that's right, and I guess we had, the water district was insisting that we remove debris, something to that, is that right? Okay, that, that helps. So I'm guessing a lot of that was probably trees and other stuff, not necessarily trash. Is that, is that fair?
This is related to trash, that, what Kip was talking about is separate from just other stuff, but, yeah, but this is trash related under the stormwater permit.
No, during the, after the 2017 flood, we did a number of trash-related and mucking out of houses and things like that in the creek area as well as part of the recovery effort. Could you pull the slide up so I can see what we're talking to, please? Sorry, Kip Harkness, Deputy City Man.
It's on a slide, it's on page four of the report.
Okay.
I don't know if it's on a slide, but it just shows that the tonnage that we removed in 17, 18 kind of spiked, so that would have been starting, what, July of 17? Anyway, just trying to understand.
Mayor Liccardo, as, as Kip is reminding us, you know, those floodwaters really cleaned out a lot of the creek debris, so debris that we normally wouldn't have, maybe seen or certainly had access to, became very accessible. And so the, the volumes were significantly increased as a result of that unfortunate event.
Got it, okay, all makes sense. Thank you. Okay, let's, we, I'm trying to remember if we have a motion. If we do, let's vote.
Aye.
Corales?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza? Aridis? Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everybody. Eight point one is the Community Stabilization and Opportunity Pathways Fund Commission. There is a presentation.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Nancy Klein, Director, Office of Cultural Affairs and Economic Development. Just switched it around to keep you guessing. We're very, very excited to be here today. I'm here with Lori Severino and Rosalyn Huey. And on this item, just a couple of introductory comments. Today before you, if approved, is an action that will accomplish a significant milestone along the journey for Downtown West, and for implementing an innovative and very meaningful way to support our community. Next slide? Oops. Got it. Thank you. On the background, what we're asking to do is amend an ordinance in the city that would require establishing a Community Stabilization and Opportunities Pathway Fund, and the commission, and authorize the Community Stabilization and Opportunities Pathways Fund to create their own procedural rules and regulations as they come on and begin working together. As you probably remember well, City Council approved Google's Downtown West Development Project in May of 2021, and the project included a development agreement, which included within that a $200 million amount in community benefits. The community benefits to San Jose goes well beyond any regular requirements and mitigations. The community benefits package is on top of all of those mitigation requirements, and reflects the top priorities of the community. Community benefits are intended to be equity-focused and based on extensive outreach that went from 2018 to 2021. The community benefits were summarized in Exhibit H of the Development Agreement. And while there's the overall number of $200 million, the largest portion of that is $155 million groundbreaking fund, which would set out two priorities for community stabilization and displacement, community opportunity. The contributions for the company would come in as office is built, and they would, the funds would be used to provide grants to programs serving disadvantaged communities in San Jose, focusing on those communities that have historically been affected by structural racism and where risk of displacement is the highest. The purpose of the fund is to minimize displacement and minimize potential negative impacts from any development, and to maximize opportunities for local youth and adults to participate and benefit from job opportunities through training, education, and support. Reference the Opportunity Pathways. Community stabilization is to include programs and services related to the prevention of displacement and homelessness, and opportunity pathways is to include programs and services related to economic opportunity. And the work of the fund will be to bridge these two areas using a systems-based, metric-based approach to address the roots and causes of displacement and economic mobility, and to advance racial equity in measurable ways. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Lori Severino.
Good afternoon, City Council. Lori Severino with the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs. I'll begin with a quick summary of the commission's composition. The fund, the commission will have 13 voting members and one alternate, who may serve in place of any of the voting members. At least five of the voting members must represent lived experiences in the areas that the fund is intended to address, while at least eight must have relevant work experience. There will also be at least four non-voting members, including three representatives of city staff, and one Google representative. Together, the commission should reflect the diversity of San Jose. Sorry, gotta push it hard, I guess. Okay, there we go. The commission members will serve four-year terms and have the option for reappointment, but for no more than two consecutive terms. Initially, six of the members and the alternate will serve a two-year term to achieve staggering. The subject of this agenda item is City Council's appointment of the initial commission members based on staff's recommendation. The city manager is responsible for appointing the non-voting members, and we will share those appointments through an info memo in early 2023. To develop the recommended slate of members, we began by preparing an application that was open for about four weeks in October. We created a website to share information and hosted a virtual meeting, and four technical assistance events at libraries to help people with the process. We noticed the opportunity to apply and the events through emails, social media, and flyers. The emphasis was on utilizing the networks of staff, council offices, and community-based organizations that work with the target populations for the lived experience seats, and that have relevant work experience. We received 27 applications and deemed all but one of them as complete. A panel of three city staff from the Housing Department, Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, and Office of Racial Equity evaluated the applications against the membership criteria. They then developed a slate of 14 people based on the combined scores and overall balance of perspectives. They also recommended a term length for each person on the slate. So here's the first part of the recommended slate. The nominees for the lived experience seats collectively have a range of perspectives in the program areas, such as being unhoused, being a renter with a large family, and having limited opportunities while growing up in East San Jose, for example. Here are the other seven on the slate, as well as the alternate. The nominees for the work experience seat together have professional experience and subject matter expertise in all of the fields listed in the membership criteria, such as affordable housing, education, workforce development, research, philanthropy, and nonprofit So after the appointments, the next steps will be to onboard the commissioners, conduct the required trainings, and build capacity for the work together. The first big task will be to work with staff on the procurement process for the third-party fund manager. The next step will be preparation of the first five-year strategic plan, which will involve community engagement and will be presented to City Council for approval. Grant-making can begin after approval of the strategic plan and after receipt of the first contribution from Google. So I just want to wrap up by acknowledging the hard work of John Castaneda on the OED team, as well as the Clerk's Office, Attorney's Office, and Sabrina Para Garcia in the Office of Racial Equity for their partnership on this process. We also want to thank all of the people that applied for the commission, and the community leaders who have been involved in getting us to this milestone. Thank you.
With that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you, Lori, thank you, Nancy. Let's go to the public.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. The Horseshoe was specifically left out of here. You see, Google's tendency is going to be in proximity to D-11. I grew up in D-11, okay? That's not the east side, okay? So you're already excluding the largest Mexican Chicano population that is in proximity to Google, number one. Number two, the Horseshoe was D-11 on the redlining map, okay? The east side is the east side. They're nowhere near Google. So there's already a fallacy in the way that you're setting this up. That's number one. Number two, I don't want no nonprofit connected to Somos, connected to Working Partnerships, or SB Rising, because it was those organizations that gave me a death threat, and I got four bullets fired at me because of Rebecca Adama-Dadas' connection to those organizations, especially Working Partnerships. Four bullets fired at me because I advocated for a bill.
Mary Helen Doherty? Mary?
On behalf of PACD and as a member of the multi-year campaign led by a coalition of faith, labor, and grassroots community groups, we ask for your vote of approval for this Community Stabilization, Stabilization and Opportunity Pathways Commission, with our strong support for the proposed slate for this commission. The funds the commission will manage are required to address significant issues, hardships, and sufferings for so many members of our community, including displacement, tenant abuse, access to affordable housing, and lack of opportunities for economic stability. We thank the staff for their work to improve community engagement and hope their outcome will be a model for future city projects, and we are encouraged to see the list on the slate for the commission. We believe your vote of support is an expression of the moral values that guide your leadership and help build a just and equitable San.
Oscar Castro?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Oscar Castro, Working Partnerships USA. And we are standing alongside our coalition partners and expressing our strong support for staff's recommendation, in particular for the proposed slate for the Community Stabilization Opportunity Pathways Commission. As many folks know, this has been the result of a multi-year campaign with a lot of internal discussion and external actions, and through a robust amount of organizing and education, we're at this critical juncture today. We are really elated to see the opportunity to have community be at the forefront of leading on addressing solutions and, and allocating resources to those specific solutions, and alongside community members' lived experience, having a broad representation of folks of multiple industries to be able to provide and lend expertise to all of these matters as well. So thank you again to everyone involved in that process.
Sandy Perry?
Hi, this is Sandy Perry. I'm from the Affordable Housing Network, and we strongly support the establishment of the Community Stabilization Fund and the slate of community members that are proposed by staff. The creation of this commission is a step in the right direction for many reasons, but especially because it recognizes the connection between the council's development decisions and the social and economic costs of those decisions, and the social and economic problems that we, that we suffer from in San Jose. Since the Downtown West Google project was proposed in 2017, the so-called Google effect of rising housing prices and rent. of rising housing prices and rents has increased homelessness in San Jose by almost 50%. We commend staff for working with the community to develop the proposed community members with broad community representation.
Denia Silva?
Hola, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Denia Silva.
Hold on, we're switching to the translators as well. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Denia.
Hola. Este, mi nombre es Silva, del Comunitario Sagrado Corazón. Este, agradecemos la profunda reflexión que estuvo en cuenta al grupo.
That has taken into consideration my team, my group?
Tener una amplia representación.
To have ample representation?
Permitirá una mayor capacidad para impulsar.
It will allow a greater capacity to impulse solutions.
A través de este fondo. Gracias.
Through this fund. Thank you. Araceli?
Araceli?
Hi, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Araceli. I'm with SEIU and also a resident of San Jose. Alongside our coalition partners, we would like to express both our excitement and our support for the item before you all today. A multi-year campaign has led us to the critical juncture, and we now have the opportunity to finalize the selection of this commission and begin to move forward with putting the dollars from this fund to work for the betterment of our entire community. We look forward to the approval of this slate so the official work through this commission may begin. Thank you for your opportunity to provide comment on this matter.
Blair?
Hi, good morning. I was a bit worried. Really, I don't know too much about this item, but I've heard a lot of good public comment here about it. Thank you for that. Good luck on how to involve all parts of the community in the future of this oversight process. There was some, there has been some really interesting oversight practices that have developed out of the future of this Google Village, community oversight practices. I hope we can learn to apply the good lessons we've learned in the public meeting process of SAG and other Google things towards other community oversight practices like police oversight, technology oversight, and inviting different parts of the community to the future of the commission process. Thank you.
Ana?
¿Puedes escuchar? Bien, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ana Guadalupe. Y yo soy miembro también del Sagrado Corazón Centro Comunitario.
I'm also from Sacred Heart Community Center.
Y yo he visto que a medida que nuestra ciudad.
And I've seen that as well as our city.
Continúa lidiando con varios desafíos, incluyendo el desplazamiento.
Continues to deal with displacements.
Y viendo que la necesidad continúa. Y eso que tenemos que tener más oportunidades de desarrollo.
We need to have more opportunities to develop.
Económico y laboral.
Economico and labor.
Y estamos aquí para que a través de esta medida, colocando la voz de la comunidad.
And we are here so that we can place the voice of the community.
En una posición de liderazgo para identificar y proporcionar recursos.
In a leadership position to identify the resources and the opportunities.
Sean más apropiadas y efectivas.
And that they be more adequate and effective.
Gracias por escucharnos.
Thank you for listening to us.
Dave Pacheco?
Hi, good afternoon. Thank you to Google and all of the activists that made this happen, and a special thanks to those that are willing to step up and help with this commission. I'm a volunteer at a nearby school that could really use the help. I do tutoring, but the, you know, the need is overwhelming. And I apologize if I missed it, but I didn't see any sort of explicit schedule or expectation on, you know, what the timelines might be for the grant request. So perhaps the mayor or council member might ask, you know, follow up with staff if they could provide a timeline. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Andrea Portillo?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name is Andrea Portillo with Somos Mayfair. Alongside our coalition partners, we would like to express both our excitement and our support for the item before you all today. As our city continues to grapple with various challenges, including displacement and the continued need for economic and workforce development opportunities, we are through this measure putting community voice in a leadership position to really identify and provide resources to the folks most affected by these solutions. We really applaud the recommendations for the Community Stabilization and Opportunity Pathway Fund Commission that you all are seeing today. I really look forward to the approval of this slate so the official work through this commission can begin. Thank you again for your opportunity to provide public comment.
Back to the council. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, no, Araceli already spoke. She'd also turned in a regular card. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Questions from the council? Councilmember Cohen, was that from before? Okay, Councilmember Jimenez?
Oh, that was from before, but I wanted to move.
Okay. All right. Councilmember Foley?
Did you just assert my emotion?
He did, accidentally, but with a lady's.
It's quite all right. I'll second his emotion. His emotion.
I think someone already got to it. That's all right. We'll let the clerk start it up.
Okay. Back on focus a little bit. Really exciting to see the formation of this group. And Nancy, congratulations on first negotiating the Community Stabilization Fund with Google and including it in the development agreement, and now creating this pathway for grants to be disseminated to the community in our underserved areas. So congratulations to bring it to this point. And I see the list of names, and I know many of them, and I have great confidence that they'll be able to do the good work that they are charged with doing, which is collecting funds and distributing. What fund is that? To make the, to protect the communities that they intend to serve? And that's, that's great. And the variety of people that you have and those with lived experience, I think that is really important that we have that diversity. I will follow up on the timeline question. When do you see this panel, this commission, beginning its work? And when will it likely, will we have check-ins to the city council? Is that the plan, that we'll have regular check-ins? Or will they go to a committee first? And what do you see the report back to the council to be?
Thank you very much, Councilmember. Nancy Klein and Lori Severino here will both answer part of that. The first work will be to familiarize and get the committee seated, familiarize them with the work and those items that will be helpful for them to do their work well. Then we will go on to choose the fund advisor as a team. Then the work will be to create the first five-year strategic plan. And the strategic plan will come back to council. Council will be the deciding body on the guide rails, if you will, on how the committee would function and what it is focused on. And there will be annual review by the council, and the council has full ability to audit if there is any concern in any year when the annual report comes to you. The work will take, we estimate, to get to the point of bringing back a strategic, five-year strategic plan, at least two years.
Okay, that answers my initial question, because there's some, you need to locate the fund manager, and do you do an RFP for that? And so then selecting them, that comes back to us because we're going to approve the fund manager. And then bring the commission up to speed as to what their expectations are, what their jobs are, and even setting their own structure as to who's running the meetings and that sort of thing. So you expect that we'll get a report back with the five-year strategic plan proposal in two years or so? Okay. And is that, will that be going through a committee first or just direct to the council?
At this point, it goes directly to council.
Okay. Great, thank you. I'm really excited, although two years, it comes and goes really quickly, but it'll be really exciting to see the plan once it's developed. Thank you for all your work.
All right, I think those are all the questions we have. So let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Caralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Crossco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza? Arenas?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
I have a door opening.
Councilmember Arenas?
Yes.
Yes, from Esparza. Thank you.
Okay. Item 8.2, because a year wouldn't be complete if we didn't talk about billboards, electronic billboards on city-owned property status report. Welcome, Rosalyn. And Blagé, and everybody.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council members of the public. I'm Rosalyn Huey, Deputy City Manager. I'm joined this afternoon by Blagé Zalalich, Deputy Director of the Office of Economic Development and Cultural Affairs, and Nora Chen, Assistant to the City Manager. And so this afternoon, we are providing just a brief status report on staff work on digital signage on city-owned properties, as well as providing a recommendation from the Community and Economic Development Committee. And just by way of a reminder, our work was really inspired actually by a Chamber of Commerce study mission trip to Denver a couple of years ago. And we were inspired really to enhance the vibrancy of our downtown with digital signage and, where possible, to remove existing blighted billboards. Also, we saw the opportunity to explore technologies for emergency notifications and other messaging for our residents in the city. And then lastly, the opportunity to generate revenue for the city. So with that, I'm going to pass this over to Blagé, who's going to provide just a brief overview and an update of the staff work plan.
Thank you, Rosalyn. So by way of background, between 2016 and 2018, staff completed analyses and multiple rounds of engagement and discussion with the community, billboards and signage companies, and tenants in the city-owned facilities around the placement of these digital signs. In September of 2018, council approved an updated, an update to City Council Policy 6-4, allowing different types of digital signage. The policy identified 17 city-owned sites that could have up to 22 signs. And a program-level environmental review was performed for those 17 sites. At that time, staff was directed to prepare and release two requests for proposals. One, the Select Sites RFP, which was for building-mounted signs in the downtown. And the second was Alternative Sites RFP, which was for freestanding, freeway-facing signage on city-owned property. We got a little bit busy, as we all were, with the COVID-19 pandemic and recovery and resiliency efforts there, and so that delayed staff's work a bit on this progress. However, with some additional staff resources, we are back on track and have issued notices of intended awards for both the Select Sites process and the Alternative Sites process. So the initial Select Sites RFP solicitation was released in August of 2019, and a notice of intended award issued in December. The RFP solicitation was subsequently reissued due to a technicality following that NOIA issuance. The select, the second Select Sites RFP was reduced to six sites, removing the San Jose Museum of Art and the Second and San Carlos Garage, and that was reissued in May of 2020. Proposals for the solicitation were received in July, and the NOIA was issued earlier this month for five downtown sites. With respect to the Alternative Sites process, which was for freestanding, freeway-facing signage, the initial RFP was issued in July of 2019 with a notice of intended award issued in July of 2020 that was subsequently rescinded in order for us to reexamine our initial evaluation. A new notice of intended award was issued in July of 2021, and that was for three sites. And so moving forward, our plan between January and August of 2023 is to conduct the environmental analysis that's needed for the project for each individual site on both the Select Sites and Alternative Sites locations. And staff's intention is to bring recommendations that are packaged up with a final lease contract terms, as well as the final environmental review, to the city council in fall of 2023.
So at the October 24th Community and Economic Development Committee meeting, committee members recommended that we accept the status report and direct staff to return to City Council to amend City Council Policy 6-4, signs on city-owned lands to include the tree replacement ratio and 100% renewable San Jose clean energy requirements that were a part of the council-approved project plan for two outdoor advertising digital billboards under the airport advertising concession agreement between the city and Clear Channel.
So Mayor, that concludes our presentation. We'll be available for any questions.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go to the public.
13th Street?
This is Craig Chivataro. I wanted to express my disappointment that the time and attention of city council and staff are still being spent on this topic. The reasons that digital billboards are a bad idea have been well expressed over the years and are well-known to staff and council. Thirty years ago, the council recognized that billboards were part of blight in the city. That remains true today, but council pretends otherwise and proceeds toward a digital billboard's future. Residents of San Jose have been clear in their overwhelming rejection of allowing new or digital billboards. Continuing to pursue this plan makes it appear that council is in the pocket of special interests, not serving the residents of San Jose. Please reject further pursuit of this plan. Thank you.
Jason?
Hi, Jason Hem, No Digital Billboards in San Jose, N-D3 resident. I'm urging the council to conduct a formal review of Council Policy 6-4. You've heard from us in the past, we believe it's flawed. Although today's agenda and the presentation recommends updating the site ordinance to use clean energy and to help beautify our neighborhoods with more trees, it doesn't fully address the preservation of our community's aesthetic and environmental impacts to our community where new billboards are going up. For example, digits have been measured to consume up to 46 times more power than conventional billboards. If we put up a dozen billboards around town, when we have rolling blackouts, are we going to allow these billboards to stay on during peak power usage during risk of rolling blackouts? Thank you.
John?
I'm John Miller with No Digital Billboards on San Jose. Our organization has initiated several Public Record Act requests to obtain specifics regarding the billboards proposed on public buildings downtown, but the Office of Economic Development has refused. But the Office of Economic Development has refused to make this information available, citing it as confidential and proprietary. They don't even like to admit that new billboards downtown won't require any existing billboards be taken down. Could it be because they don't want to keep the public informed about what's really going on, the scope and the magnitude of what they are planning? Their resulting plans will be sent to the City Council for rubber stamp approval with little public notice. And that's, that's unfortunate indeed. I recommend, and our organization does, that you review Policy 6-4 in its entirety. Thank you.
Sarita? Sarita Sharma? Moving on to Les Levitt?
The CED report is incomplete. What's missing are things like the city is currently in a lawsuit over the first billboard project you approved. Is anyone interested in understanding that a council decision triggered this lawsuit and the plaintiff has a case that is going to be very difficult for the city to defend? And at what cost? The other thing we suggest is that you look at the airport project and see what can be learned with respect to the takedown requirement. You stipulated that billboards would be taken down in low-income and high-crime areas, but most of the billboards on the takedown list are in industrial locations or in a dilapidated state and should have been taken down anyway. And one reminder is that there is no take-down requirement for the downtown Phase 1 billboards, but there should be. Please defer this approval and move any discussion of revising 6-4 to a future date when it can be discussed in detail.
Paul Linum?
Hello, this is Paul Linum at Lick Observatory at the University of California on Mount Hamilton. Opening the door to electronic billboards has been a misstep which threatens to stain this council's legacy. Electronic billboards contribute to us losing the night. It reduces opportunities for scientific discovery. Only today, my colleagues at Livermore announced a breakthrough in harnessing nuclear fusion, the process by which most normal stars shine. If we are unable to observe the stars, how can we aspire to such breakthroughs? With projected declining revenues for the outdoor advertising industry, proceeding with billboards condemns to our children and grandchildren an unequal and unsightly San Jose populated by ISOs, often poorly maintained, decrepit, malfunctioning, and typically acting as beacons of underserved neighborhoods. Reject the present report and review the policy. Thank you for your service. Good luck to the outgoing council members.
Paul Soto? Paul?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I agree with the first caller. I apologize for not remembering your name. I apologize for that. But I mean, he was just so right, spot on. The first time that this came to city's attention, it went through the Arts Commission. So I mean, it was a real slick way to try to like move it through, but it caught a lot of attention. So now all of a sudden it gets, you know, on these, on the city agendas. But this is not how this topic started. It went through the Arts Commission because you guys thought you'd just go ahead and just slide it on through and nobody would, nobody would notice. Well, sorry to tell you, we noticed. And it, it just, it's just, it's offensive. It's offensive and odious, the fact of how much, how much time is being spent by city resources, being spent on an issue that the people have already advised you, we don't want it, get it out of here. We know what time it is.
Blair?
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I hope you guys are learning a lot, you know, how to be more open about the electronic billboards and data collection issues. And it doesn't have to be a fearful process to learn how to better describe the data process involved. I think the more open we are in talking about these things, that's the community innovative future we really have to work on and understand. We can't just feed each other the same lies that we've been giving each other for decades now. It's really a time to really sit down and practice, you know, open accountable practices with data collection. And it can be done. I keep trying to offer the examples of Berkeley that's improved upon civil protection ideas with data collection for electronic billboards and the like. Things can be worked on. So good luck on really making it a community effort. It can be easy, enjoyable, fun, open, all the good stuff. Thanks.
Back to council.
Thank you. Thanks for the, for the work and the presentation. I understand we've got committee direction to include tree replacement and also include green energy. As I recall, when we had this conversation offline, I asked about the takedown requirement. And I know there's an issue about not every company's going to have billboards to take down. Would staff be able to accommodate a takedown requirement if there was an option of either a takedown or an in-lie payment to the city of funds that could be used for blight reduction?
I mean, I think moving forward, we would be able to work that out. I guess the question is, we did go out with an RFP that didn't have those parameters in there.
Right.
And so what our ability would be to go back, certainly we can ask for it, but I don't, I don't know how that would work in terms of us having to
Good question.
start the process all over again.
I understand we don't want to do that. So Nora, I don't expect you have a magic answer, but is there any flexibility for staff to be able to do this at this point? Or are we pretty, pretty constrained?
Thank you, Mayor. They can certainly ask. And I think my office has been working with the staff on where they can go from here, but there aren't a lot of options other than an ask.
Okay.
Or to just start all over again from the beginning.
And if I could just ask whoever the maker of the motion might be to consider inserting that as a requirement going forward in future RFPs so that we can have, achieve our blight reduction goals as well. Okay. Any comments? Councilor McCollum? Oh, sorry.
I have a, just a few questions. First, let me just start by just saying, so the council previously has approved the process of putting these, these RFPs out. I don't think we're being asked today about whether that was a good idea or not. I mean, that's something that happened before I was on council, so I can't speak to whether I would have supported it or not. Since we've already put out the RFP, what, you know, in the future, they'll come back for approval presumably. We have the opportunity at that point, if some of us say, hey, we don't think that this is a good idea, this location, to say just no to the approval and not? Or is it kind of, once the RFP's out, is it, is it moving forward, you know, and we don't have a choice of reining it back in?
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. So since the RFP has been issued, and obviously there were certain criteria, right, that bidders had to respond to. They've been in value, those proposals have been evaluated based on criteria. Staff will continue to work with those bidders. We have the opportunity to negotiate and come up with terms of agreement. We'll put together a recommendation and bring that to City Council for your action next fall. Obviously, the council, it's a discretionary action, right? And you'll have the opportunity, but, but obviously, staff will be making the recommendation based upon the bidder's response to the criteria of the RFP.
Okay, thanks. I do think it's important, given that the RFP's out, that we make sure that we put together criteria that are going to give us benefit, more benefit than we might already have in the criteria. So strengthening those criteria tonight, today makes sense. And certainly I support the proposals that I was part of proposing the last time for the airport ones about increasing tree replacement for what times the trees are taken down using clean energy, increasing the billboard takedown. So just a couple other questions. For the downtown billboards, we expect there may be bidders who are not currently having standalone billboards that could be removed. Is that true?
Yes, council member. So actually, just to be clear, the proposals were received. So we put out the RFP, the proposals have been received. And we had, we did issue a notice of intended award
Okay.
earlier this month. And so, yes, there was one company, actually two companies out of the three that proposed that did not, wouldn't have had the takedown ability because there are only two companies in the entire city that actually have, have billboards.
Yeah, I wish there were, I mean, I appreciate the suggestion. I'm trying to think if there's something that can be done. It's pretty hard to say now after the contract's been intent for award. I also wonder about the ability to be competitive if we ask for some fees in exchange as opposed to just taking down old dilapidated billboards that you may already own. So it's a tough one for me to figure out what the right criteria would be, but I wish, wish there was some way for us to say, hey, we still need to figure out how to remove some other billboards in order to, to do this. I don't have the answer right now.
Just to clarify one thing, if I could add, the criteria for the Select Sites RFP did have city messaging criteria. It did have obviously a minimum annual guarantee plus additional revenue to the city. And it also had aesthetic parameters, very kind of high aesthetic artistic parameters, which, which really was the basis for that initial building-mounted RFP. So the idea that it, it wasn't just like kind of a regular freeway-facing sign. It was, there was a significant artistic component to it that involved the community as well.
So for the downtown billboards, the policy would not, if, if there were a bidder for downtown billboards, that building, building-mounted billboards that had other billboards, we could, we would be enforcing the removal? Or is that, is it a different, is this really only for the standalone, the removal?
There was not a takedown requirement in the RFP that was put out for the building-mounted signage.
And then for the other portion, even though we've already put out the RFP, we could still increase the requirement at this stage and not affect the process?
I believe, and Nora, maybe you can correct me, but I believe at this point, we would be asking, we would be trying to negotiate an additional
And the council has the group, the ability to say, we're not going to accept this contract if you don't do it.
Potentially, yes.
Okay. I think that's all my questions for now. I don't know if I have a motion to make. I mean, I, I'd make a motion to, for the stricter requirements in the, in the proposal. I don't, if anyone has a suggestion of anything beyond that, I'm willing to listen to friendly amendment, but I'll make a motion for the staff recommendation.
Second?
Councilor Cohen, I would ask if you would also include that, any future RFPs would include?
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll include that as well, for future RFPs, yeah.
Some takedown and equivalency requirement. I think that's what you're referring to. Is that right? Okay. And that's okay with the second?
I'm good with that.
Okay. Any other comments? Okay, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay. We should be breaking, I think, at about 5:30. But let's see what we can get done. 8.3 is the funding commitment for Second Street Studios. There's no presentation, is there, Jackie? No, okay.
Move approval.
Let's go to the public.
Second. I'll second.
Are there any comments from the public?
No.
Okay. All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Yes.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas? Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
And Lucardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, item point four, 8.4 are the, the Home Key Funds for capital acquisition and rehab of Pacific Motor Inn on South Second Street. We do have a presentation on this item.
Move approval.
Second?
All right, you've got a pre-presentation motion. Jackie, would you like to present? Whatever you like to do. You don't need to present. All right. That's confidence right there. We'll then go to the public. Mr. Beekman is coming down? Yeah.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for efficient agenda item, I guess. Thank you as an order. Yeah, Home Key project issues. Just thank you, just an important reminder of, as important as good as Home Key projects can be, there's a series of other things we can do for the future of housing that's really important. And if we organize ourselves well in 2023, those things will become really easily and understandable by 2024 and '25, I think. So good luck to ourselves in those, in the work and effort we're going to have to do in the next year. And the previous item had issues of low and moderate income housing that it's an important component, how to talk about that issue in the future of what used to be market rate housing, I think. That's going to be an important concept with very low and extremely low housing. Thank you.
Paul Soto?
Yes, Paul Soto from the Horseshoe. I would really like, I mean, this is cool that this particular housing project is going up. But two people, when you look at your newspapers today, it just came out at 3:58 PM, two more people died on their streets, Mayor, of exposure. It was exposure. Their death certificates are going to read exposure. This is your legacy. It just came out not more than an hour ago. Okay, so you need to accelerate this. You need to multiply this. And I hope our mayor-elect is listening because we've got expectations. And you've got a lot of expectations. You've got a lot of balancing act to do because two human beings from your city are dead because they froze to death on your streets because of your incompetence and your inadequacy to address specifically the poverty that is created and the homelessness that is associated with it. Thank you.
Isaac?
My name is Isaac. I'm the president of the Cottle VTA Station. We, we believe that the Cottle VTA station is not the right location for the EIH for the following reason. The Cottle VTA has been extensively used by our, our community before the pandemic. During the November 19 City Council meeting, city staff showed Cottle VTA with empty parking lot. This was a misleading picture that does not represent the reality. Google historical pictures shows and proves that the Cottle VTA station was fully used before the pandemic. Also during the same meeting, city staff said that many people who used the VTA before pandemic were Kaiser employee. This is also not true. Healthcare workers never stopped going to work even during the pandemic. And given that the Cottle VTA lot was empty during COVID, proves that people using the Cottle VTA were not Kaiser employee. It was us.
Satish?
Hi, my name is Satish Namdi, and I'm going to be talking about the Cottle EIH program. Want to express that it's a highly-used station and it's not the right place for the EIH. It's also heavy traffic and probably poses a lot more risks to the public with any extra work being done there. And all of the community, including Isaac, what he spoke to, is opposed to this project. And our, our comments have not been taken. So the community's completely been discarded. And this particular community has been accommodating near close to like 60, 70% of these projects. And so we, Cottle VTA is not the right place for it.
Madukar?
My name is Madukar Thakur. I live within a mile of the Cottle Road VTA station in South San Jose.
Point of, point of order, Tony, these are all related to EIH and not this item.
Okay.
Should we wait for open forum?
Yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, because I don't always know what's what. So if you're here to talk-
Can I wait until the open forum?
Yeah.
Okay, call me again in the open forum.
Yes, sir, this is a- Yes, sir, this is a different item.
Yeah, so the next two speakers, if you're here to talk about that same issue, you need to put your hand down and raise it again at open forum. We're talking specifically about the Home Key 455 South Second Street.
She's still muted.
Hello? Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Can you please start my time again?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Vicki, and I object to building an EIH at the Cottle.
Vicki, we're talking about a different item. We're talking about a site on South Second Street, but you can certainly speak again at public comment.
Okay, so there's no more hands.
Okay. Let's go back to council. Yeah. All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Oh, no, Councilmember Jimenez, Peralas would like to speak, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Sorry, stealing victory from the jaws of defeat or the other way around, but I just want to say thank you to staff for their hard work on this path, West Bank for their partnership. My colleagues may recall some press on this. This was not an easy one. This was a contentious site, and a number of stakeholders felt this was not the best location for this project. Ultimately, we waded through that and found a way to not only just move forward with the project, but also found a way to work in collaboration with the neighboring developer, West Bank, and was not easy. I know this was a first of a kind for PATH and our housing team, and then we were contingent on funding from the state through the Home Key program and really just waiting and waiting and hoping that we could have something that was worthy of funding, and I know we heard the urgency from one of the public speakers on timing in this case. Right, we were waiting for a grant from the state, and we know we are looking for resources in many different places, and I absolutely would agree, love to see more of these projects move forward. Ultimately, the Home Key program is contingent on state resources, but we have many more opportunities, and I look forward to those. I look forward to this project hopefully coming to fruition in the near future and ultimately being a redevelopment site that can be a tremendous benefit for the entire community, and so thank you to my colleagues as well for their support on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Peralas, and thank you for your support, obviously, as well. Your leadership in supporting affordable housing throughout the district has been really critical. Big thanks to Nancy, Jackie, Rachel, everyone who worked so hard to make a difficult deal work, and to West Bank for stepping up. All right, let's vote.
Jimenez?
Aye.
Peralas?
Yes.
Cohen?
Aye.
Carrasco?
Aye.
Davis?
Yes.
Esparza?
Yes.
Arenas?
Yes.
Foley?
Aye.
Mahan?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Liccardo?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, let's take a break until 6 o'clock. In the meantime, I don't believe that's on the agenda.
It'll be in.
Yeah, it's on after our evening agenda.